We'll call the city council meeting to order and I'll give the invocation and the pledge of allegiance and then Ms. Huerta will call the roll and hopefully by that time other folks will be here and we'll be ready to get going. Join me in the word of prayer. Our Father, we're thankful for another day that we can come together and discuss what needs to be done to help our community. We pray, Father, and give thanks for those that are on the front line of this coronavirus, our medical personnel, our first responders, the families that are taking care of those that are sick. Continue to guide them, encourage them, strengthen them, and protect them. Be with us as we make decisions that will be for the betterment of this community. And we pray for our safety and we pray for a quick end to this virus. These things we ask in your name. Amen. Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Texas. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, in one. All right. Ms. Huerta, would you please call the roll? And we have council members that are online or webexing or streaming or something.
Yes, sir. Participating remotely.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Mayor Joe McCombe.
Here.
Council members Roland Barretta.
Here.
Rudy Garza.
Here.
Paulette Wajardo.
Present.
Gil Hernandez.
Here.
Michael Hunter.
Here.
Ben Molina.
Present.
Everett Roy.
Present.
Greg Smith.
Here.
City manager Peter Zanoni.
Yeah.
City attorney Miles Rusley.
Yeah.
Mayor and council, a quorum of the council and the required charter officers are present to conduct the meeting.
All right. Thank you. Since we've been in this pandemic order, we've changed the process a little bit. So we'll go to public comment is usually the first item now as opposed to the preliminary items below it. So, a public comment. Ms. Huerta, I have several copies of emails and comments that people have emailed.
Yes, sir.
And these are comments that wanted to be made during public comment period?
Yes, those are general public comments. So those are the ones that are attached to the minutes as a part of our record.
All right.
So we've got those.
And all the council members have been given a copy of them.
Yes, sir. Uh-huh. In advance.
So if you send in some public comment, we've been provided a copy and they'll be in the minutes and we appreciate doing that. And then there's also an opportunity, if folks want to make verbal comments since we don't have in-person presentations. Ms. Huerta, have you got a list of folks that want to do that?
Yes, sir. Just give me one moment, please.
All right.
Judge Gonzalez?
Yes.
All right. Will you please state your name and address and make your comment?
Are you ready for me now?
Yes, ma'am. We are.
Okay. Thank you. Barbara Gonzalez, Noises County Judge. I'm calling in my capacity today as Noises County Judge. So we are at 901 North Leopard, Corpus Christi, Texas, 78401. On May 11th, Governor Abbott and Lieutenant Governor Patrick and the senior members of the Texas Legislature issued a letter with guidance on distributing federal funds available for coronavirus expenses. This is known as the CARES Act. The rules for counties of our size allocated funding on a per capita basis and the money went directly where each resident lived. The county only received funds for those living in the unincorporated areas. This means the city of Corpus Christi received 90% of those funds and the county less than 5%. However, we have a longstanding relationship in city-county health and we have a 60-40 split on this type of allocation with regards to expenses. In the letter, Governor Abbott and our state leaders wrote that we encourage cities and counties to work together to address expenses across jurisdictional lines. Today is the three-month anniversary of that letter. As county judge, I've asked for this issue to be on the agenda at the city council meeting. That was denied, but since then, we have had a robust discussion yesterday and I fully expect that my request will be heeded in order to have it on an upcoming city council meeting for full presentation. I ask the council to heed Governor.
Thank you, Judge Gonzalez. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Judge.
Okay. I'm sorry. I need to make sure the timer's proper. Okay. Thank you. Tom?
Yes?
Okay. Sir, are you ready to make your comment?
Yes, I am.
State your name and address and then make your comment, please.
My name's Tom Kreppel. I live at 1618 Montalvo Drive in District Number Five. My comments are in regard to desalination. Various information sources suggest the current and available water sources will be adequate for the foreseeable future for the projected population of this area of the state. So it raises the question as to why the mayor and city council are in such a hurry to develop the dangerous and costly and energy-intensive technology of desalination. Who will benefit from that technology? What economic and environmental impacts will there result? Who will bear those costs associated with the technology? And how will those who are harmed by the technology be indemnified? Desalination is moving forward without broad public discussion and involvement and I think it's the job of the mayor and city council to lead this conversation rather than to suppress it. So put desalination on the ballot. We had opponents and proponents.
Mr. Kreppel? Thank you very much, Mr. Kreppel. Appreciate it. Ms. Raiza?
Yes?
Okay. You ready to make your comment?
Please state your name and address and then make your comment, please. My name is Isabella Raiza. I live at 326 Ponash. On 2018, Mayor McCombe won the mayoral runoff with less than 11,000 votes. District One's Roy Everett won with 1,582 votes. District Two's Ben Molina won with 1,596 votes. District Three's Richard Barretta won with 3,901 votes. District Four's Greg Smith won with 11,285 votes. District Five's Gil Hernandez won with 4,656 votes. This week, for the greater good, we keep another 212 signatures. We've collected nearly 4,500 signatures of people during a pandemic saying they want an opportunity to vote on whether or not the city pursues D-SAL. You are all doing an unethical pursuit of desalination for heavy industry while my fellow community members have to grapple with sinkholes. You're selling out the people and the greater coastal benefit pillagers. I just don't understand how you can demand that we pay for desalination projects for heavy industry when they don't pay taxes when they already get tax abatement and industrial district agreement.
Thank you, Ms. Raiza. Ms. Garcia?
Yes?
Okay. Are you ready to make your comment? Please state your name and address and then proceed.
All right. Brittany Garcia, Bronner Parkway, District Two. Around 4:00 AM, a water pipe burst in District One, breaking through the street and flooding the area, creating the possibility for a sinkhole, which wouldn't be the first in Corpus. The city needs to focus on replacing our existing aging water infrastructure before it pursues costly D-SAL plants for future heavy industry that taxpayers will have to pay for. You have over 4,200 signatures in your hands from Corpus voters and we've received hundreds more since then. You've all received hundreds of emails from constituents that you have left unanswered. These are all registered voters who are watching what you do today. Put D-SAL on the ballot for the people to decide because these are the same people who will be voting on who they want representing them as mayor and council members and we won't vote for anyone who ignores their constituents. Do the right thing. Put desalination on the ballot so the public can vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Ms. McKay?
Yes?
Okay. Are you ready to make your comment? Please make your comment and we'll state your name and address and then make your comment, please.
All right. Brittany Garcia, Bronner Parkway, District Two. Around 4:00 AM, a water pipe burst in District One, breaking through the street and flooding the area, creating the possibility for a sinkhole, which wouldn't be the first in Corpus. The city needs to focus on replacing our existing aging water infrastructure before it pursues costly D-SAL plants for future heavy industry that taxpayers will have to pay for. You have over 4,200 signatures in your hands from Corpus voters and we've received hundreds more since then. You've all received hundreds of emails from constituents that you have left unanswered. These are all registered voters who are watching what you do today. Put D-SAL on the ballot for the people to decide because these are the same people who will be voting on who they want representing them as mayor and council members and we won't vote for anyone who ignores their constituents. Do the right thing. Put desalination on the ballot so the public can vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Ms. McKay?
Yes?
Okay. Are you, please state your name and address and then make your comment.
Great. Thank you. My name is Eli McKay and I live at 1008 Marguerite Street in beautiful District One. I wanted to comment today to ask the council to allow the citizens to vote on desalination. A lot of people have voiced their concerns on being able to vote even in the midst of a pandemic in regard to D-SAL. I feel the people deserve a vote and I urge the council to do what is best for the people. And that's really all I have today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. McKay. Mr. Klein?
Yes?
Okay. Please state your name and address and make your comment.
My name is James Klein. I live at 3501 Monterey Street in Corpus Christi. My comment is I urge the city council to place on the November ballot a question concerning the public funding of desalination projects. Despite the pandemic, a petition drive gathered the signatures of several thousand voters who want this question placed on the ballot. Discharge of brine from D-SAL plants would change the salinity of Corpus Christi Bay, harming plant and animal life and those who rely on the bay, on bay life for their livelihood. One D-SAL plant privately funded will begin operations in 2021. No one has studied the cumulative effects of two to six D-SAL plants all discharging brine into the bay, though there are multiple D-SAL plants proposed. Desalination is not necessary to secure water for the city's population. Public financing of D-SAL plants would increase water rates for Corpus Christi residents. City residents should be allowed to vote for or against public financing of D-SAL projects and these water rate increases. Let the people vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Ms. Campos?
Yes?
Okay. Can you please state your name and address and make your comment?
Okay. Sylvia Campos, 4410 for District Two. I'm calling in because we have a big project, the desalinization project, that's going to affect all of us, all the citizens, not just the business side or the business community of this city. And I am demanding that we put it on the ballot. This is horrible, what the city is doing. How can you have a multimillion-dollar project and not have complete input from its citizens? It's undemocratic. It's just uncalled for. I just don't get this. I don't get how people like us, ordinary citizens, can't see it. But I can see that if you're just in the same echo chamber, listening to the same type of people, that's what you get. And all of y'all, right there, are all business people and not looking out for all its citizens. So, again, I demand that you put it on the ballot.
Thank you, Ms. Campos. Robin?
Yes?
Hi. Hi. Can you please state, can you please state your name and address and make your comment?
Hello?
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Robin Carstensen, 449 Claremore Street, Corpus Christi, Texas. Are we ready?
Yes, we're ready.
Dear council, good afternoon. I'm writing to urge city council to put the no D-SAL charter amendment on the ballot. Let the people vote. We have collected nearly 5,000 signatures from our citizens, even though we weren't able to meet at public spaces because of our global health crisis this pandemic. We would have been able to get, gather the necessary signatures if we weren't in this crisis. We also have a wealth of data and information to show us the surge of damage to our bay with the desalination plant. We know the excessive brine that it produces, the marine life that will destroy an entire ecosystem from that brine. We know it will harm our fishing and birding and tourism industry and we don't want to spend millions of our taxpayer dollars and gallons of our own fresh water to, to do this. We want the city to have a chance to vote. We want to be good stewards of our democracy and we want to have a chance to show how we want to care and nurture our home. Please put the D-SAL law on the ballot. Thanks for hearing me.
Ms. Zamora?
Yes?
Okay. Can you state your name and address and make your comment, please?
Hello. My name is Melissa Zamora. I live at 3917 Bronner Parkway, Corpus Christi. This is in regards to the agenda item 18. The local organization for the greater good and collaboration with the Texas Campaign for the Environment recently turned in a petition to the city to voice the concerns of 4,227 registered voters in Noises County. Keep in mind, we collected all of these signatures during a global pandemic, which did not help our cause, but shows our dedication. If we were under normal circumstances, we would have surpassed the required number of signatures as we were just shy of 3,398 voters. All we are asking is that the people of Corpus Christi's voices be heard through a vote on the November ballot. We care deeply about the health and well-being of our citizens and ecosystem and believe that you should too. But when you make choices to deny our charter amendment for the greater good of our bay and turn around and submit another amendment that is only focused on raising your own salaries and council terms, that demonstrates that you do not care about anyone else but yourself. I urge you to do what's right for the people of this city who deserve that.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Zamora. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes?
Okay. Are you ready? State your name and address and then you can make your comment.
My name is Eduardo Gonzalez. I'm a resident voter of Corpus Christi. My, my belief is that the desalination process, the decision-making process, is a special interest only. It serves only the heavy oil, gas, and chemical industries. And you're doing the work of the port of Corpus Christi in terms of undue influence because they don't have any accountability to the city residents. There's no transparency and, excuse the pun, you're water carriers for the port. Residents have no role in this very monumentous decision that it will impact our bay. You don't, you don't seem to care. It's close, it's close to public discourse. There will be no vote if you do not place it on the ballot. We have had over 4,000 people sign a petition wanting it on the ballot and we will reach out to those 4,000 people to make sure that they are.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Okay. Oh, one more. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Summerlin?
Yes?
Please state your name and address and then make your comment.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Errol Summerlin and I live in Portland. The city of Corpus Christi overcommitted our water supply to accommodate Exxon, Sabeck, and Steel Dynamics. You also want to attract other petrochemical facilities like Project Falcon that will need 30 million gallons of water a day to operate. Any possible drought you speak of is not caused by Mother Nature. It is potential drought conditions caused by you. The people know it and they want to stop this insanity. You know they would have succeeded in getting the required signatures but for the virus and you know they would have succeeded in November. You manage my water supply and are not doing a very good job of it. I trust the citizens of Corpus Christi to make the right decision after a full and informed public debate. Put it on the ballot. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Summerlin. Mr. Farley?
Yes?
Okay. Can you please state your name and address and then make your comment?
This is Barney Farley. I live at 410 East White Avenue in Port Aransas.
Go ahead and make your comment, sir.
Okay. Okay. I'm a resident of Port Aransas since 1960. And this area, within 50-mile circle with Corpus Christi in the center, is going to be developed into a total industrial expansion. It's taking place now and I believe it's only the tip of the iceberg. There doesn't seem to be any limit to what wants, to what the, the oil companies and the port of Corpus Christi and the city of Corpus Christi and the city of Portland want to do. I don't see any end to the industrial expansion. Now, this D-SAL plant that we're talking about today, okay, that's just the first. There are going to be many more D-SAL plants and once one is in there, there wants to stop them from building another. Also, they get expanded. That's a lot of pollution. I mean, pollution is what I'm talking about.
Okay. Mr. Farley? Mr. Farley, your time is up. Thank you so much. And that concludes the call-ins today.
All right. Thank you very much and we appreciate people taking the time to call. We realize the time is short, but I think we understood the message and we appreciate you taking the time to get in touch with us. That completes the public comment period. We'll go to the city manager's comments and update on city operations.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, we have a couple items to brief you on this morning and we're going to first, though, begin with Annette Rodriguez, Public Health Director. And she's just going to give us a quick status on where we are with COVID-19.
Good afternoon. So, the update is really going to focus this morning on COVID-19 in addition to seasonal flu. Next slide. So the Health District, as everybody here knows, we do communicable diseases for all of Noises County and there's 90 different communicable diseases and so we have to investigate each one of those. And so part of that is not influenza. A lot of people think, oh, you keep all the influenza numbers. While we do, it's not a reportable. But influenza for the pediatric, if it has a pediatric death associated with it, it is a reportable condition and has to be reported to the Health District. So we're going to talk a little bit about that as well. So flu season will pose yet another obstacle to overcome during this pandemic. Next slide. So here I have a depiction of the flu with COVID-19, so running simultaneously together. They have very similar symptoms. So the flu symptoms, they begin one to four days after exposure. When you look at the pink side, the COVID-19 symptoms begin one to 14 days after exposure, the incubation period. The cause of flu is the influenza virus and influenza has different strains. So normally you hear of type A or influenza B. Influenza A also is broken down into like H1N1, which is the swine flu, and also H2N3. So, and then the cause for COVID-19 is the SARS-CoV-2 virus, as we all know. The complications for flu are less likely to occur because of the immunity that you have built up over time, but also because there is a flu shot. And so we want to encourage everybody this flu season to get their flu shot. The complications for COVID-19 are severe respiratory complications and they may come on extremely quickly. And the prevention is the self-isolation part that we're talking about every day, the non-pharmaceutical interventions that you've all heard, washing your hands, covering your eyes, covering your nose and mouth, making sure that you're not touching your eyes, nose, and mouth with dirty hands and social distancing. And how are they transmitted, the flu and COVID-19? They're both transmitted through respiratory droplets from an infected person and the symptoms are the same. They have fever, they have cough, they have fatigue, and they, of course, have the respiratory symptoms going on. Next slide. So I wanted to show some of the statistics that we follow every year. And so if you look at the red line, that's this past flu season that just ended in May of 2020. And so it was interesting that this flu season, that we seem to have higher numbers every week. When, the year prior, we didn't have high numbers till we started to peak, which is really more normal, to be honest with you, around late February. So the beginning of March, that's normally when we start peaking here in South Texas. So up north, they peak earlier. But if you look at the red line again, we seem to be having high numbers of flu all year long, starting, our flu season starts again October 1st and it ends in May. And so that's an interesting phenomenon because we need to also figure out how the COVID is going to, you know, play in these numbers. So again, your flu vaccine, get it as soon as possible to help reduce the burden to hospitalizations because you still see people going to the hospital with regular seasonal flu. So the number of cases of flu every year are right around 8,000. For 1819, it was 8213 and for 1920, the year 1920, it was 8,475. Next slide. So testing for COVID-19 and flu. So CDC, you know, has a lot of smart scientists up there and they've decided that they need to create a multiplex, a multiplex assay. And this is going to be where we've all heard of the VTM, where we get the nasal swab and we get swabbed and we put it into the VTM. So you're going to do the same thing with this assay, but you're also going to get tested for flu at the same time. So while we test you for SARS-CoV-2, we're going to test you for flu at the same time. So CDC is in the final stages of completing the distribution and distribution is scheduled to be finalized by the end of the month. So in August, in time for flu season. So that'll be great. So while, the only issue we have right now is that the one that's going to be developed is going to be developed on, for our slower machine, our PCR, our regular PCR machine, which we do around 84 tests per day. But they're also talking about developing it for the Panther as well, which we do much more tests for that one a day. Next slide. So here's an overview of the COVID-19 statistics. The main number that I want to show you is the total where we're at today, 15,423 COVID positives for Noises County. The other interesting number that you'll see out to the right is the 18-year-olds and under, 1,507 in Noises County. And the reason we're looking at this number, we're looking at, we're looking at it as a baseline number because school is about to start. School has The people know it and they want to stop this insanity. You know they would have succeeded in getting the required signatures but for the virus and you know they would have succeeded in November. You manage my water supply and are not doing a very good job of it. I trust the citizens of Corpus Christi to make the right decision after a full and informed public debate. Put it on the ballot. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Summerlin. M-? Farley?
Yes.
Okay, can you please state your name and address and then make your comment?
This is Barney Farley. I live at 410 East White Avenue in Porter Anzus.
Go ahead and make your comment, sir.
Okay, okay. I'm a resident of Porter Anzus since 1960. In this area, within 50 mile circle with Corpus Christi in the center, is going to be developed into a total industrial expansion. It's taking place now and I believe it's only the tip of the iceberg. There doesn't seem to be any limit to what wants, to what the oil companies and the Port of Corpus Christi and the city of Corpus Christi and the city of Portland want to do. I don't see any end to the industrial expansion. Now, this diesel plant that we're talking about today, okay, that's just the first. There are going to be many more diesel plants. And once one is in there, there wants to stop them from building another. Also, they get expanded. That's a lot of pollution. I mean, pollution is what I'm talking about.
Okay. Mr. Farley? Mr. Farley, your time is up. Thank you so much. And that concludes the call-ins today.
All right. Thank you very much and we appreciate people taking the time to call. We realize the time is short, but I think we understood the message and we appreciate you taking the time to get in touch with us. That completes the public comment period. We'll go to the city manager's comments and update on city operations.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, we have a couple items to brief you on this morning. And we're going to first, though, begin with Annette Rodriguez, Public Health Director. And she's just going to give us a quick status on where we are with COVID-19.
So, the update is really going to focus this morning on COVID-19 in addition to seasonal flu. Next slide. So, the health district, as everybody here knows, we do communicable diseases for all of Nuones County. And there's 90 different communicable diseases. And so, we have to investigate each one of those. And so, part of that is not influenza. A lot of people think, oh, you keep all the influenza numbers. While we do, it's not a reportable. But influenza for the pediatric, if it has a pediatric death associated with it, it is a reportable condition and has to be reported to the health district. So, we're going to talk a little bit about that as well. So, flu season will pose yet another obstacle to overcome during this pandemic. Next slide. So, here I have a depiction of the flu with COVID-19, so, running simultaneously together. They have very similar symptoms. So, the flu symptoms, they begin one to four days after exposure. When you look at the pink side, the COVID-19 symptoms begin one to 14 days after exposure, the incubation period. The cause of flu is the influenza virus. And influenza has different strains. So, normally you hear of type A or influenza B. Influenza A also is broken down into like H1N1, which is the swine flu, and also H2N3. So, and then the cause for COVID-19 is the SARS-CoV-2 virus, as we all know. The complications for flu are less likely to occur because of the immunity that you have built up over time, but also because there is a flu shot. And so, we want to encourage everybody this flu season to get their flu shot. The complications for COVID-19 are severe respiratory complications and they may come on extremely quickly. And the prevention is the self-isolation part that we're talking about every day, the non-pharmaceutical interventions that you've all heard, washing your hands, covering your eyes, covering your nose and mouth, making sure that you're not touching your eyes, nose, and mouth with dirty hands and social distancing. And how are they transmitted, the flu and COVID-19? They're both transmitted through respiratory droplets from an infected person. And the symptoms are the same. They have fever, they have cough, they have fatigue, and they, of course, have the respiratory symptoms going on. Next slide. So, I wanted to show some of the statistics that we follow every year. And so, if you look at the red line, that's this past flu season that just ended in May of 2020. And so, it was interesting that this flu season, that we seem to have higher numbers every week. When, the year prior, we didn't have high numbers till we started to peak, which is really more normal, to be honest with you, around late February. So, the beginning of March, that's normally when we start peaking here in South Texas. So, up north, they peak earlier. But if you look at the red line again, we seem to be having high numbers of flu all year long, starting, our flu season starts again October 1st and it ends in May. And so, that's an interesting phenomenon because we need to also figure out how the COVID is going to, you know, play in these numbers. So, again, your flu vaccine, get it as soon as possible to help reduce the burden to hospitalizations because you still see people going to the hospital with regular seasonal flu. So, the number of cases of flu every year are right around 8,000. For 1819, it was 8213. And for 1920, the year 1920, it was 8,475. Next slide. So, testing for COVID-19 and flu. So, CDC, you know, has a lot of smart scientists up there and they've decided that they need to create a multiplex, a multiplex assay. And this is going to be where we've all heard of the VTM, where we get the nasal swab and we get swabbed and we put it into the VTM. So, you're going to do the same thing with this assay, but you're also going to get tested for flu at the same time. So, while we test you for SARS-CoV-2, we're going to test you for flu at the same time. So, CDC is in the final stages of completing the distribution and distribution is scheduled to be finalized by the end of the month. So, in August, in time for flu season. So, that'll be great. So, while, the only issue we have right now is that the one that's going to be developed is going to be developed on, for our slower machine, our PCR, our regular PCR machine, which we do around 84 tests per day. But they're also talking about developing it for the Panther as well, which we do much more tests for that one a day. Next slide. So, here's an overview of the COVID-19 statistics. The main number that I want to show you is the total where we're at today, 15,423 COVID positives for Nuones County. The other interesting number that you'll see out to the right is the 18-year-olds and under, 1,507 in Nuones County. And the reason we're looking at this number, we're looking at, we're looking at it as a baseline number because school is about to start. School has started in some places and face-to-face school will be starting soon. Next slide. Now, I'm going to talk to you specifically about deaths. So, these are the vital records for July. We compared July of 2019, last year, the deaths, there was a total of 273 deaths. And then for 2020, there was a total of 406 deaths. We do know that according to the death certificates, 123 were COVID-19 related. Therefore, 283 were non-COVID related, which is comparable to last year, 273 compared to 283. The other that is interesting is that if you look on the left side for July, the death rate is very much in line with the state of Texas, 3.27 for the United States, 1.7 for Texas, and 1.64 for the, for Nuones County. Next slide. So, for the month of July, looking at the death certificates, we had 123 people that according to the death certificates died. For Nuones County, for the health department, we have closer to 160 deaths. And that's because we're actually talking to the nurses at the hospitals and finding out how many deaths we have every day. So, there's a lag between the death certificate and what we receive. But if you look at for July, what's really interesting to me, because people ask me this every day, is that 37% had no comorbidities. So, 37% of the deaths just from July had no comorbidities. 63%, on the other hand, had comorbidities. And the highest number of comorbidities were diabetes, high blood pressure, and obesity, both obesity and morbidly obese. The deaths by zip code for July, the highest numbers were in the 78415 zip code. And then the second highest number were in the 78405 with 16. And then the 78380 were 12 and the 78410 were 10. And 64 were in the other zip codes. Also interesting for the month of July, four people died at home and four people died at the emergency room. The majority of them were male, 70, and 53 females. They do not have race on the death certificate, but if you looked at their surname, and I know you can't really go by surname, but if you looked at their surname, 100 had a surname that was Hispanic, 23 were other. Next slide. This slide was a slide that I took from CDC and this is just the US deaths by age. And it's very indicative of what we just saw for July. Kind of has that same pattern. It was just more informational. Next slide. This is what I've already talked about, about the difference in reporting for death certificates. So, the states reporting by, by date of death, when they actually receive that certificate, which we know that there's a two-week lag normally because that's the law that you have 10 days that you can file your death certificate. We continue at the health district to get it from the hospitals and also from the medical examiner's office. Next slide. So, what are the steps to stay healthy? Everybody here knows these steps. Wash your hands often, cover your mouth, nose, and eyes. Make sure that you cough into a tissue and then throw the tissue away and then wash your hands again. Avoid contact with people who are sick. Social distance of six feet and stay home when you are sick. Next slide. Some of the initiatives the health department is currently doing is we're doing back-to-school immunizations through a drive-through event. And we've actually vaccinated 306 individuals through that drive-through venue, which has been very difficult for our staff because of the high heat temperatures currently. Next slide. So, the next probably biggest question that I get every day is, so what does the future look like? So, if history repeats itself, and I've learned that it really does repeat itself, we will receive vaccine. When we will receive the vaccine? I don't know. But until then, we know that we all have to practice the non-pharmaceutical interventions. And I appreciate everybody doing their part, wearing their masks, washing their hands, and social distancing. So, but one of the things that we've learned from H1N1 is when we do receive vaccine, that it is a tier approached. And so, I wanted to talk to you a little bit about it because I don't want anybody to think, you know, what's going on, why are they doing this? So, what we, what we found from swine flu was that when they do make the vaccine, they don't have enough for everybody, but they have a small shipment. And so, they send a shipment and they normally send it to the health department, but they also send to Amistad, which is a federally qualifying health center. And so, we start vaccinating. But the first tier is normally the public health workers and that's because we're going to be vaccinating the rest of the community. So, we know we're going to be around people that are possibly COVID-19, so we need to make sure that we're protected. The second tier is usually the first responders, the vulnerable populations, the nursing homes, the residents, the 65 years and older. They will give us very specific, depending on the number of vaccines, who we will be able to vaccinate. Tier three is usually individuals with comorbidities, critical infrastructure personnel. And tier four is the rest of the community because hopefully by that time, there will be enough vaccine to vaccinate the whole community. We are being told that we will be receiving large shipments of seasonal flu vaccine, but that will not be until November or December. So, what I would encourage you to do is to get your flu vaccine by the normal mechanisms that you normally get your flu vaccine. So, if you normally go to your PCP, continue to go to your PCP because they make that almost a whole year in advance. And so, it's very difficult to get additional flu vaccine at this point. We will have a drive-through tomorrow. We have 100 people signed up. The good news is our phone banks, the calls are going down, which is exciting to us. In June, we had over 30,000 calls. In July, we've had closer to 15,000 calls. We are working very closely with the schools on their plans to reopen. We're also working with them on football, UIL regulations, and their school plans. We're working with the churches that are talking to us about reopening. We are, we do have a task team that will be assigned to retail stores to make sure that there's COVID-19 compliance. We have plenty of VTM right now, 2,570 supplies on hand, PCR, 900. And for the Panther, we have 250 test kits available. I'm available for questions. Thank you.
All right. Anyone online or in the back room have a question?
You're at, I, I wouldn't mind if we got a copy of that presentation and they could send it out. That was great.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Powerpoint to that?
Yes, absolutely.
All right. Yeah, that's some good information there. Anyone else out in the cloud? Mr. Hernandez?
Yeah, Annette, just one real quick question. When you were talking about comorbidities, where you listed them diabetes, hypertension, obesity, morbid obesity. But I noticed when you looked at the death chart, there was a lot of people who were in the elderly ranges beyond 65, that the, the number increased as it went along. Would you count advanced age as a comorbidity? You didn't have that listed.
You know, I didn't count it as a comorbidity, but yes, I would count it as a comorbidity on there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other question? Well, you and the first responders are doing a great job. I hope this is over soon. I think everybody's getting weary, but we're going to win it. I think we're on the downside of the curve. And if we can get the state to report on a timely fashion, that would at least take the psychological jolt out of people when we get the reports. But our numbers have been adjusted when we get those data dumps to see where the curve really is rather than just spiking up and down. So, but we've been assured by the state, for those that are watching, that they're going to get their new computer software up and performing so that we get timely reports. Everybody's got a computer to blame for their problems, so, all the way from the local level, all the way up. But that's the story we're getting and they're sticking to it, that it, but it, it is very frustrating of the public and people that watch the briefings and get the notices. I think they're about one step away from just totally disregarding anything they hear anymore. The reliability and the credibility with these dumps and, and the lateness of them has really had a negative impact on the public's belief in what they're hearing. And that's a shame because we're trying to be as transparent and current as we can, but we have no control over that. But I know our state representative and our delegation is working with the state to get us that timely information and we get it to you as quickly as we can. But we're, the credibility gap is, is really growing with those delays. But soon as we get the information, we're putting it out. So, we'll try to make sure that they get it to us a little quicker. Anything else? Again, thank you for you and your staff and what you're doing.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Zanoni?
Okay, great. Thank you, Annette. Yeah, you guys keep staying safe over there. Mayor and council, just a few other quick things. I wanted to highlight that on today's agenda, we do have a item that will approve a service agreement to increase our street, street sweeping in the city. And the services include sweeping and scraping curb and gutters, removing sediment, and also vegetation. And this is a big deal because we're going to increase the amount of sweeping that we do. Currently, we do sweeping a few times a year on our arterials and collectors, but that's it. So, this contract will allow us to do arterial and collector sweeping four times a year. In our neighborhoods where we live, our residential streets, for the first time, those will be swept twice a year. And in the future, we want to grow that to four times a year. But this is a good start, twice a year. Downtown, Uptown, North Beach, and Ocean Drive, those areas will be swept three times a week. So, those important commercial and tourist corridors will be swept three times a week. And as I mentioned, this is a, this is a first for the city in probably many years. So, we're, we're glad to highlight it today for the residents. I hope people are listening and we'll share this information as well. We will post on our website in October the sweeping schedule so residents can see when we'll be coming down their neighborhood. And so, more about that as we get into the council meeting. Sticking with streets, I need to tell you, and we'll be sending you a memo of a street closure that's near to City Hall. It's on Leopard Street and it deals with the Flatiron Dragados' work on the Harbor Bridge. And so, just down the street here, as you proceed west on Leopard, where the hill begins to descend from Josephine to down there in that current intersection, there's a street called Culbertson. And basically, that access or throughput or throughway is going to be cut off. And so, you won't be able to drive Josephine, I mean, you won't be able to drive Leopard Street anymore down all the way to the rest of Leopard. It's part of an interchange that's going to take place there. And that closure is significant because it's going to be at least through and all of 2021. Yeah, and so, I'm sending you a memo that'll have a map and all. And there are two detour routes to get around if you still have to get to Leopard, say, to go to the high school or any, any business down there. The detours will set up, have been set up and will be marked. That includes using Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, not exactly sure where the, it is from pointing here, but, or Comanche Street. So, basically, you're going to have to go around and then kind of reconnect to Leopard. And so, we're also helping the community, as is Flatiron Dragados', with the community of social media posts and, and other material. We'll have to keep it up because there's games, if they, if we do have games this fall. Persons who don't drive that route today, may in the fall or early spring. So, we'll continue to make sure we have good signage up and continue to inform the community. Now, just a piece of good news here amongst some of the more challenging stuff is, you know, we just, a couple of weeks ago, had Hurricane Hannah. And North Beach had a pretty heavy hit. And we know that a lot of the beach sand came right up onto several of the streets going west onto the peninsula. And it also impacted the, there's a nice plaza, a nice plaza that the USS Lexington has before you get onto the, to the, to the Lexington. That was inundated with sand several feet deep. And it's not city property, but city crews, including 50 public works crews, were in the North Beach area cleaning up right away that first weekend. And we took it upon ourselves, or Richard did, I should say, is he still there? Our public works director, to have our crews help out the Lexington. I think they were out there with brooms and shovels, but it would have taken them weeks, they said. And so, the city crews knocked it out in a day. Now, we got that plaza, I saw it the next day and you couldn't even tell it was a hurricane. So, we want to thank the crews for doing that, for going above and beyond. The Lexington staff are very appreciative. In fact, they are, they're extending a complimentary visit to the Lexington to all the public works crews that help as soon as they can get out there. So, that's nice. We want to thank Richard and thank our teams out there that put the community first. We appreciate that, as does the Lexington. Okay, and then the final thing is we're, we are in the, in the budget, in budget calendar times. And yesterday evening, Councilman Roy and I held our first virtual community input budget work session. And it went pretty good. We, you know, at the live event last year, we probably had 50, 60 people or so. But last night, we had 195 residents on YouTube and 168 on Facebook, so, and some on the phone watching on TV. So, probably at least 400 people were piped in last night, which was good for our first one. The, the, the event went real well and we got a lot of community input on the budget itself, as well as some city services, a little bit of follow-up. We do have more community input this week. We have two more. One tomorrow night, City Council District Two, hosted by Councilman Molina. And then the third one this week will be Thursday, hosted by Councilman Barrera. And they all start at 6 o'clock. So, the format's pretty good. Peter Collins and the IT team did everything perfectly. There was not, no issues at all. It was really a good forum. And then next week, that'll be three this week. Next week, we'll have two additional ones. Monday, August 17 will be District Four, Councilman Smith will host that one. And then Wednesday will be the fifth one, the final one. That'll be August 19, hosted by Councilman Hernandez. So, we look forward to continuing these. It's a little different than the in-person, but given the COVID pandemic, it's a good way still to reach out to the community. They'll continue to be livestreamed on YouTube and Facebook and our public channel, public access channel, CCTV 20. And then persons can either type in or type in their comments through those mediums or they can call. And Deanna did a great job last night, kind of moderating everybody and, and getting everybody heard. And then finally, on the budget, we, we are still working with the council on budget workshops. We know we had our first one last Thursday. There'll be a second one this week, a pretty important one, on our streets and other infrastructure, including our water, wastewater utility. That'll be this Thursday. And then there's two more in August, August 20th and August 27th will be the final one. So, that concludes some of the updates, Mayor, and what's going on in the city. And I'm going to give it back to you.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, if you would, the judge was kind enough to come and comment so that people will know we did, she did refer to a meeting that we had yesterday to discuss the funding. And we are working with the judge to identify ways that we can work with the funding. I mean, we're trying, they're, they're trying and we're trying to identify what our expenses have been up to date through the coronavirus. And that's, that's challenging because it kind of changes day to day. But at this point, I'm, we've, we're a little over $4 million that we've identified and we're trying to put the touches back on it. You want to address just a couple of things?
Yeah, sure.
Not a lot of detail, but we want the public to understand we're, we are working with the county. The, the funds were allocated by the state the way they were. We didn't have anything to do with that was allocated. And so, obviously, we're, we've got to make sure that what needs that we've had are addressed and we're certainly willing to share and work and coordinate between the county and the health district and, and the city, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good point, Mayor. So, we, you and I know, and I think the council knows and the community knows, that we're in this together with the county. This is not about one, one entity versus another. Nuones County is our home as well as the city. So, we've been working, you and I and others, real closely with Judge Canales and the Commissioner's Court. And so, we are trying to get our house in order to begin with before we come to the council with a recommendation on how the 18 million would be allocated. with a recommendation on how the 18 million would be allocated between the two. And last week, we began doing that. And so I met with our chief financial officer and Heather, our finance director. And so we're assembling our city team, a department head or an assistant director and a fiscal person from each department to be the liaison, because we have to work, we have over 30 departments. We have to make sure we're coding all the expenditures related to the pandemic. And so as you know, we have that $4 million earmark, but we want to challenge the team, make sure we're counting everything and accounting for everything so that we can know how much we've spent to date and then how much we think we might spend through December. We want to be able to cover our expenses before we pledge money to Nuasis County, just to be blunt about it. So part of it is, is making sure we understand what we're doing as a city. And then secondly, as we did yesterday, we'll begin to work with the judge and the county to see what are their expenditures and what's their long-term plan. We'll work together. It's not about we're going to take all the money and give the county whatever's left because both entities are helping the community, helping you, helping me, helping, right? So we just want to make sure we're, we can account for and cover ourselves as a city. The same thing with the county. So it's really a conversation that we have to have with both entities. And to do that, though, we have to understand our side of the conversation first, and so that's what's going on. So within a couple of weeks, we should have a good confirmation on what we spent to date and what we think we might spend through December. And over those next couple of weeks, we'll have several meetings with the judge and her team, the county auditor, and so on, to make sure we come out with an agreement that's suitable for both parties. And we'll bring that to City Council ultimately. So that's why it's important to bring it up today.
All right, thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the minutes of July 28. Everybody's been provided a copy and entertain a motion for approval of the minutes. There's a motion and a...
Second.
Second. Any discussion, corrections, additions, deletions? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the motion passed. Ms. Werthe, we have one new board. Would you kind of explain?
Yes, sir.
What this new board is and the process we're going to use today?
So we have the Construction Trade Advisory and Appeals Board scheduled today for appointments. This is a new board effective April the 1st. It was created through our boarding committee review process that we finalized in March, and it's a consolidation of several other technical boards, the Electrical Advisory Board, the Building Code Board of Appeals, and Mechanical Plumbing Board. So we're coming together now to put this new committee together. There are nine members on the committee, and their terms expire on March 31 of 2023. And they represent the following categories. There's a Texas Professional Land Surveyor, one HVAC contractor, one HVAC technician, one plumber contractor, one master plumber, one electrical contractor, one master electrician, one engineer or architect, and one general contractor. So at this time, we have resumes for five of those positions. We are asking for postponement of four of them, the land surveyor, the plumber contractor, the master plumber, and the electrical contractor. We need to do some further recruitment. But the department has asked us to, we could move forward with the five so they can start dealing with some appeals that they need to take care of now. So that's what we're asking the council to do. So the first position that we could look at would be the HVAC contractor. You do have some, you have a resume. There's one gentleman, Mr. Wanzar, who is expressing interest and qualifies for that category. He previously held, he previously served on the Mechanical Plumbing Advisory Board, so he's a former member. So if the council is interested in moving forward with that, we could.
Move to appoint Wanzar for the position of the HVAC contractor.
Second.
Okay. One other, okay, we've got several general contractors.
Yes, sir.
Just one of those, but we got, okay.
Yeah, and that one, we have a little more selection, but on this one, if you look, it's the HVAC contractor, the one gentleman who fits that category is Mr. Wanzar.
All right. There's a motion and a second?
Yes, sir.
On that one?
Yes, sir.
Any other? Well, that's the only one, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, Mr. Wanzar's our first appointee to that new committee.
Yes, sir.
No, excuse me, I'm sorry. Can I ask? So you're, I think you said initially the electrical, I mean, we have someone for electrical? But were you saying we're, we want to postpone that?
The electrical one, yes, at this time.
And that's for what reason?
We could use some more resumes for that one.
So we have two?
For electrical? Well, we have a master electrician. Paul, well, Paul Cervantes actually could do either one. You could choose if you'd rather make him the electrical contractor, you could.
Oppose to the...
He's master electrician, so he owns, he's pretty well qualified in the field. But that is a choice. You could, you could, if you'd rather appoint him as the electrical contractor, you could.
And this has been out for how long?
This board since April, for a while.
We've had it on news release for months already, and I even talked to the other applicants, and they were trying to get people to recruit as well, but...
I would say we go ahead and fill that slot, and I would be happy to nominate Mr. Cervantes.
So instead of the master electrician?
I thought we were going to nominate him for master electrician.
Well, that's, he owns a company, it seemed, I mean, I don't want to assume things for the council, but he also qualifies for that position, and that's what we were thinking.
Sorry, that's what I meant.
Oh, for master electrician?
I'm sorry, for electrical, yes.
Master electrician.
Master electrician, right?
Right. Right, I'd like to nominate him and go ahead and fill that slot if everybody's okay with that.
Master electrician.
Right.
Second, I second that.
Okay, so Mr. Cervantes for the master electrician. And the motion was made by Ms. Juarez, seconded by Mr. Barrera.
Any other comment or nomination? Any none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then we got HVAC technician.
Yes, sir, that's right.
And we have just one of those, and we got one slot for that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Jared, I'm not sure how to pronounce his last name, Merdes.
I'd like to nominate Jared.
Okay.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second for Mr. Merdes for the HVAC technician. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, and then what else did we need? We got three?
We could use an...
General contractor?
Yes, sir, a general contractor.
Well, let's see, yeah, three. David Foster is a general contractor, Pete Cavazos is a general contractor, and Gary Kemp is a general contractor.
Yes, sir.
All right, anybody have a nomination on any one of those, for one of those?
I nominate Gary Kemp.
All right, Gary Kemp for general contractor. Any others? Entertain a motion?
So move.
There's a motion.
That's the only nomination? Okay, all right.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, for Gary Kemp for general contractor.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, so that gets you one, two, three, four.
Yes, sir.
Need the engineer.
Yes, the only one lacking is the engineer or architect.
Nominate Ramiro Munoz for engineer.
Okay.
Who?
Munoz III.
Mr. Munoz.
Okay, yeah, that's all, okay. Romero Munoz.
Was there a second? I missed it.
Second.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anybody have any other comment? All right, there's a motion for Romero Munoz III, engineer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so what do we do?
That's five, Mayor. That's what we can fill today.
Okay, and then you got several, you got...
Yeah, we've got the surveyor. We still have some work to do to get the...
You got an electrical contractor and what else?
Land surveyor, a plumber contractor, and a master plumber. If anybody knows, anybody in the plumbing industry, feel free to let us know. We're looking for someone. And a land surveyor, a plumber contractor, a master plumber, or an electrical contractor. That's what we're looking for to complete this board.
Okay, is the land, I'm not in engineering, but I guess there's still people that just do land surveying as opposed to doing general surveying. There are just land surveyors? That's kind of a rare breed these days, isn't it?
Says Texas Professional Land Surveyor. Yeah, we did consult with the department on what they thought, what they thought they needed on this particular board for the appeals that they would be considering and based on that recommendation.
Somebody, surely we've got somebody in town.
Yeah, we just got to get people focused on, not on COVID and on service on our boards.
Well, we've got consent agenda items then three through 15. Couple of things to point out, don't need to pull them, but for the general public, they'll understand that item number three is a pretty significant item for a couple of reasons. One is it's an ordinance calling for a special election for the 2020 bond program, and that bond program is for $75 million. That would have 42 different projects in it, $61 million in streets, $12 million for parks, and public safety for $2 million. And this bond issue is being proposed without the need to have a tax increase.
Yeah, that's correct, Mayor. Good summary, too. This is a great, great program for the community to be considered in November.
Yeah, so it's, you know, it's a good package. I think we've heard the discussions. We all have different ideas about some, but overall, the package is good. And the fact that we can do it without a tax increase. And it also allows us, by having it at this figure, it keeps work in the future and allows us to bring on the 2018 bonds and get that programs going. And those bonds have been sold, but are going to be able, we're sold now without having to raise the taxes to cover those.
That's correct, yeah. The vote has initially authorized a 2 cent tax rate increase, but the council has decided to forego that, and we're able to do the 2018 and do the 75 million within the existing tax rate. Yes, sir.
So, all right, that's on, that's agenda item number three. Agenda item number four is an ordinance calling for the general election on November the 3rd for the election of mayor and eight council members. Rest of them are business kind of deals. Accepting a grant, seven, oh, this is another big one. Item number five is the accepting of a grant for Levolle Creek Drainage Improvement Phase. And I think the work, I think a combination of the work that's been done to date, plus the fact we didn't just get deluged with Hannah, kept that subdivision out there from getting flooded.
That's right.
And this will prevent them, hopefully, in the future. I don't know, you know what the timeline is on this?
I think it's a few years.
I don't know if anybody's on that can help us.
Peter, I think it's three years.
Three years?
Yeah.
Okay, three years to completion. But just to point out, the work that the stormwater crews have done, we were out there during Hannah's surveying, and there was no overtopping of the drainage system, no water in the roads, and certainly not in people's private property. So this will only enhance that for a bigger storm.
Yeah, that'd be great. All right, and then six through... No, I'm sorry.
Fifteen, right there.
Six through 15, right?
Right.
Yeah. So it's a consent agenda on items three through 15. Does anyone have one they want to pull for further discussion or presentation?
I have a question.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item 15, please.
15?
Yeah, that's correct, Mayor.
All right, we want to pull 15. And item number six. Anyone else?
I want to do, pull 15, but Greg pulled it, but I also have questions on it.
Okay, so the 15's been pulled. Anybody else or entertain a motion for approval of consent agenda items number three through 15, with the exception of six and 15?
Time move.
Hang on, hang on. I'd like to pull item number 11, please.
Number 11? All right, whoever made the motion, would they amend it to read items three through 15 with the exception of number six?
Yes.
Number 11 and number 15?
Ms. Juarez, yeah.
All right, the motion's been amended, and the second's okay with that? Any discussion on that? If not, entertain, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? All right, you want to call roll on those or no?
Yes.
Well, since it's called an election, two elections, don't you think about a roll call?
Yes, sir.
All right.
So for passage of the consent agenda with the exceptions of six, 11, and 15. Mayor McCollum?
Aye.
Councilmembers Roy?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Barrera?
Aye.
Garza?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Aye.
Hunter?
Aye.
And Molina?
Aye.
The consent agenda passes.
All right, now, item number six, somebody ask about that?
I pulled that one.
Okay.
I was just, a couple of, oh, hold on a second, okay. A couple of questions on this. What, what are these structures? I mean, we didn't get a visual of them. I was just curious as to what they were looking like.
Yeah, let me see if, there's Joey Johnson in the cloud out there?
Mr. Zanoni, this is Tracy Kent here. I'm the interim Parks and Recreation Director. I do also have Joe Johnson, who's our operations assistant manager over, assistant director over operations. The shade structures are made of canvas. I can let, I can let Joe talk to the specifics of it, but they are designed to be installed over the playground structures, the new playground structures. The design is meant to be quick release so that if we have high wind storms, hurricane-related type storms, they can be removed quickly. But Joe, if you want to give additional information on what the materials are made of?
Do you guys have a picture?
Yeah, Tracy, thank you.
Probably more the picture, Joe, really it's the picture, because, you know, there's so many, you see so many different types, and now they have the, you know, their weird shapes, and they're kind of slanted, and they do make a difference. I mean, I'm just wondering, because I think it would be very, it would be informative for us to see what kind of shade structure that is. Maybe you guys can send that to us? That's not of utmost importance. More so would be, I'd like to see something like this should really entail what districts these are going in. So what districts are all of these being placed? In what parks are the, in what districts are the parks that they're being placed in? Because that's not here.
I don't have the district list in front of me, but they're going in the exact same playgrounds that are being installed right now. The 14 that are being installed right now, that was just approved last month or a couple of months ago, that's where they're going to be installed.
And we can get you a listing of the districts. The names of the parks were included in the agenda memo, but we can break that down by district and get that to you.
Yeah.
Councilwoman, the, so the locations, let me just read them out for the public in case they're listening or watching, but it's South Bay Park on Harbor Lights Drive, Brockhampton Park, Colia Park on Harris Drive, Oso Park, North Pope Park, Glen Arbor Park, Hudson Park, Aquarius Park, Sugar Park, Shannon Park, Wes Guth, Dan Whitworth Park, Cullen Park and St. Andrews Park. So those are the 14 parks that are getting brandy playground equipment that was in storage for several years, we're finally getting it in. And then these 14 playground equipment structures will have the shade. And then these 14 playground equipment structures will have the shade over them. And that's the new, that's gonna be the new standard. So in the bond program that the council just approved for the voter consideration, this additional shade canopy devices as well. We'll get you the council districts with each one of those.
Okay, it, yeah, it's important. And the next question was gonna be, how were those, how were those parks chosen? And I know, I realize that's, that's probably the, a recommendation that comes up from the Parks and Recreation Board, but I also think that's very important, because one thing that we're not doing that I, and I think this came up possibly at our last meeting, had to do with the choosing of the parks that were gonna be sold. But my point here is, in terms of how the parks were, whether they're sold, or whether we're buying equipment, replacing equipment, revitalizing the park with equipment, I think it's important that we start, well, first of all, I guess I'd like to know how we come about, let's just go with selling a park, I know this is a little bit off of, of the park, but, or this particular item, but how, in this case, how did we go about choosing these to get either replacement, or whether this is new to the park, I don't know. But what's that, what's that protocol, though?
Sure, yeah, we're gonna have Tracy answer that, but none of these 14 parks we're planning on selling.
I understand, but, but, to my point is, and when we do look at selling, I'd like for us to be talking to that community that pertains to the park.
Absolutely.
To make that a point of the decision. But as far as this is concerned, yes, if you can let us know how those were chosen for the equipment and shade structure.
Go ahead, Tracy.
Yes, ma'am, we can certainly do that. I don't have that information in front of me, as, as the 14 locations were selected for the shade structures based on that these were where the, the new playground structures were going. But we can get that information as far as how those initially were selected.
Well, many of them, many of them are being, many of them had playground structures that were removed recently. And so, if not, if not all 14, the majority because of that. So they had a playground structure already, and it was hazardous. It was rusted, there were sharp edges. And so over the past couple of months, the Parks Department has been removing them. And Joey, do you know how many of these 14 fit that category?
The 14 new ones that we're installing now, Peter?
Yes, sir. How many of those replaced ones that were dangerous?
All of them needed, they were all past their life expectancy, well past.
But my, my concern is that we're do some of those parks, the, I guess the level of use of those parks need to be considered in what we're investing in that park? Because if you have a park over on some other side of town that is, is active, way more active, and there isn't anything there, and I can name a few, but yet we're replacing something over here, investing in something that, are there, are kids even playing on that? So I think the interaction with the community, being that it is their tax dollar, is important before we make or during these decisions. But there's, there must be that piece in the protocol of the process. So we need that.
These, these playgrounds were approved by council to be, to be installed already.
Right, but those are recommendations that come from Parks and Rec, so what is the rhyme and reason as to, here's the park, we recommend that you sell the park, we recommend that you replace the, the equipment, or buy equipment? How do we get to that decision? And you can get back with us on that. That's my request.
We'll get you that, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Alright, and yet, Mr. Roy?
There was something that was brought up, I just want to make sure also while we're looking into this. You said that depending on the weather condition, that they might have to be taken down. And I just want to make sure, depending on the location, that staff's there, and I kind of would like to know what triggers that. Is it 100 mile an hour wind, 80 mile an hour wind, or whatever? And make sure that, because you know, one thing I don't want to see is, we come back and find out we gotta replace six of them because we didn't get them down in time. And then the other thing, if I remember right, and I don't, there was a spreadsheet that we did. Maybe one of the other council members or mayor can recall this, but there was a spreadsheet that we looked at that I believe Keith Selman put together when we were looking at additional assets for playgrounds. And we actually, when we were, with that equipment that was in storage, I thought we went through and we looked at and had kind of a needs-based thing on those with that spreadsheet, which also outlined the cost. And I believe, if I remember right, that we also, it was looked at by district to make sure that it was equitable across the, the board. Does anybody else recall that spreadsheet?
Mr. Keith, on the, Keith, you were on? I do recall that, that was about a year ago.
Yeah, that was a year ago. So I think we actually went through that exercise and did that. But, I, because I remember Mr. Selman sitting down with each and every, you know, member and looking at those.
Yeah, there was a vetting process, right, there was a vetting process.
We actually went back and voted, so, anyway, just a little history there. That's all I had.
Alright, what's your names?
Yep, this is Keith up in the conference room. Councilmember, yes, I do remember that, and we can get that spreadsheet to, to the council in the next day or two, very easily.
Does that show the 14 parks, Keith?
I'm trying to recall if it, I'm fairly certain that it did identify those parks and where the money was coming from for those parks.
Okay.
That went with that item when it went to city council.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Hernandez?
Yes, this is something, and to Ms. Juahardo's point, I did bring this up when we were discussing parks and selecting equipment during the bond package discussion, in terms of making sure that we're, that we're looking at the utilization of those parks in assigning which assets will go to them. The higher use the park is, the more relevant it is for park equipment to be at those locations. I don't know how, I think, two weeks ago, there was not an evaluation process for that, it was more trying to just replace equipment that was bad. And I applaud that, but like I said, I think there's, to Councilman Juahardo's point, and my point two weeks ago, there should be an element of usage of those parks. The higher use parks should be prioritized over those that are not as well-used. Thank you.
The dilemma that you have is that if you got old, broken-down equipment, nobody's gonna go to the park. But there may be people that want to go to the park.
Well.
But there are other parks that don't have anything in them. So I mean, I understand what you're saying, but you gotta kind of weigh up.
You're correct, Mayor, because there, there's a park that the equipment was removed five years ago, Stony Brook Park in District 5, that it's just, they just have the little concrete surround. And nothing, nothing has been looked at for that park a long time. Now, it's more of a neighborhood park as opposed to kind of a, I guess you would say, a community park where you have basketball courts and stuff like that. But it's still something that, you know, to your point, if there's no, there's no equipment, there is not gonna be any usage. Thank you.
Staff three, who's that? Are you staff three? Alright, you're staff three today.
I think I'm staff three today. Thank you, Mayor. Alright, hit the wrong button, either one. Back to Councilmember Juahardo's first question. I believe these, and, and Mr. Johnson, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe these coverings are the same type that are, we already have one located at Dilworth Park, they're in District 2. It, it's got the, the poles about 10 foot tall, and it's angled. It provides really great coverage for the playground equipment, and so I think having these out there is really gonna be a draw for our neighborhoods and the children in those neighborhoods, and brings a value to the community. And then, going back to what parks that we are making these improvements to, I, I think that's where us as district council members come in. We are typically have our finger on the pulse of what's going on in our districts. We're tied closer to the community. And when these recommendations are made to us by city staff, we have the opportunity, I know I had the opportunity to share my concerns and share my opinions, because I know, just looking at this list, and, and I, I think maybe even having kids of my own that still take advantage of playgrounds, have an idea of, of what parks get used more so than other parks in our district. But I appreciate city staff's recommendation, and I'm looking forward, and I'm sure our children in this community are looking forward to being able to one day, someday, play on this new playground equipment. Move to approve.
Yep, last comment before we move to approve. All, a lot of what we're saying, for me, comes down to the input, Peter, of that community. Because Mayor, as you said, what you said is valid, however, you have some, you have some neighborhoods that you may not, you may have had a lot of children. And then that neighborhood grows into, it could be an older neighborhood that has, you know, they're gone, the kids are gone. Or, or it's just, it lacks in the child activity, right, that, that went to the park 20 years ago. So again, back, my whole point there is, let's get input from the neighborhood. That's the only way you're gonna know if we're making the right investment in the right area, and then we prioritize that. Because the equipment does need to be taken out of, you know, what's causing a danger. But does it need to be replaced, is, is the question. So we can't just go on, well, we're gonna take it out because it's old and all of that, and we have to replace it. For who are we replacing that? So we just need to have a good, strong protocol, which involves the community input to reinvest in that particular park.
Yeah, I agree, Councilwoman.
I second the motion.
I've got a comment.
Okay.
I think it's real important that we involve the Parks and Rec advisory committee, that's, those people spend a lot of time, and, and they are eyes and ears throughout the city, and we've got a lot of good people on that, and we, we need to respect their hard work as a board, so anytime we're talking about playground equipment, I encourage the utmost involvement in the Parks and Rec advisory committee.
I agree.
Thanks.
Alright. We gonna take a vote, or we gonna filibuster here? We could have had three parks full by now. Alright, there's a motion in the second for item six?
Item six, right.
All in favors?
Can I call?
Aye.
Did you want to call roll?
Well, yeah.
Yeah?
So for passage of motion six, Mayor McCombe?
Aye.
Councilmembers Roy? Smith?
Aye.
Barrera?
Aye.
Garza?
Aye.
Juahardo?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Aye.
Hunter?
Aye.
And Molina?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Alright, then over to item 11, authorizing a three-year service agreement for sweeping. Somebody pulled it, I'm not sure who.
It was staff member number three here.
Oh, staff member number three, alright. Let staff member in charge of streets answer your question, since it's about street sweeping.
No, it, it's a great program, and I'm really excited about this. My question has to do, I'm looking at the bid tab sheet, and my, my question is regarding the huge discrepancy when you look at, and make sure I call it the right thing here, at the pricing for unscheduled sweeping and spot scraping. Those, those prices, those unit prices are, are far, I mean, there's a huge discrepancy between the contractor that we, that you're recommending for us to award to, and, and the other contractors. Can, can you shine some light on that?
Yes, and, and we had the same question, and so we brought him in to discuss that process, and told him what our requirements were for scraping, and he said he could meet that requirement at that price.
I'm, and I hope he can. I, I, it just worries me when I see such a huge disparity there. Here, on the unscheduled sweeping, he's got a total price of $15,000, and the next two bidders, one is at 160, and the other one's at 146. So just looking at it from the outside, I would think those two would be more in line, maybe, with, with what the going price is. And same thing with the, with the other spot scraping. So I'm just really worried about the performance for that price. If, if he can meet that, then it looks like we're getting a really, really great deal.
In that section, yes, sir, we are. And he was, he was actually the contractor that we had before. So he's aware of the sweeping requirements that we have here in Corpus Christi. The other two contractors were not. They're both from out of town.
Okay, okay. Well, that's really the only question I had. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, part of our job, Councilman, is to, is to monitor the performance, so, while we don't self-perform the street sweeping, we do have team members that make sure the contractor's doing what they're supposed to do. They follow them, I had them follow them one morning, just to see. And we'll hold them to the, to the standard that they need to abide by in, in terms of the contract.
Now, as a follow-up, if, if they aren't able to meet that expectation, what are the, what's the process there?
So we, we would have a meeting for, to remedy the situation, and then ultimately, if they still don't comply with the contract, then we would go back through and terminate the contract.
Okay, got it. Move to approve.
Alright, there's a motion second on item 11, any other discussion? Ms. Wirth, you want to call the roll?
For passage of motion 11, Mayor McCombe?
Aye.
Councilmembers Roy? Smith?
Aye.
Barrera?
Aye.
Garza? Juahardo?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Aye.
Hunter?
Aye.
And Molina?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Alright, item 15, who wanted, somebody, I can't remember who.
Greg, I'll pull that one.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Item 15?
Well, yeah, you know, I think it's a great committee, and, and I'm glad we're all getting together. It's a very important piece of our city, but the reason I asked to pull it is a governance issue. So as written in the agenda package, the city manager is appointing three council members to the committee.
No, it wouldn't be council members, sorry to interrupt, Councilman, yeah. It wouldn't be council members, it would be, it would be staff, city staff.
Okay, okay, well, I misread it, that, that was my concern.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Who what?
Some, sounds like some music, Mayor.
Huh?
Probably his ringtone.
Yeah, it's a ringtone, yeah. It was very hip.
Okay, I missed that, but that's alright. Any other comments on, Mr. Hernandez, you got item 15?
Yes, yes. It didn't specify who you were gonna be appointing from city staff, I'm just curious as to who that is.
I don't have that answer yet, Councilman, but we'll
Just give me some general idea of what you
Well, certainly, so Dan McGinn, our planning director, has been involved. There's already been two meetings. He and I went to those two already. And furthermore, he understands the maps of the areas, he's been studying them from a neighborhood redevelopment standpoint. So he'd be a good candidate.
Well, I recommend, I don't want to make any decisions for you, but I do recommend Richard Martinez for that, since it does involve some projects on North Beach, involving stormwater, so, but I just want to have the idea of what you were looking at there.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments on item 15?
Move to approve.
Aye.
Alright, there's a motion second on item 15. Any other comments, or not, Ms. Wirth, to call the roll?
For passage, passage of motion 15, Mayor McCombe?
Aye.
Councilmembers Roy?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Barrera?
Aye.
Garza? Juahardo?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Aye.
Hunter?
Aye.
And Molina?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Alright, item 16 is a public hearing on a zoning case, Comacho Resources, District 1, who's gonna?
Yes, sir, and also for the record, Mr. Smith is recusing himself from this item.
Alright, Councilman Smith on item 16. Is recusing himself?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That doesn't impact the three-quarter vote that it says we need, right? Still need six instead of five?
That would only be if the council decides against the planning commission and staff's recommendation. That's, otherwise, it's a majority vote. So
Okay.
Okay.
Who's gonna make the presentation on the zoning case?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Al Raymond, Director of Development Services here. The case before you is to rezone, oh, sorry, let me bring the presentation up, thank you very much. The case before you is to rezone the property located at seventy-five, eighty-five, Port Street, from Light, IL Light Industrial and RH, RMH, Manufactory Home District to IH Heavy Industrial District. The purpose is to allow for the extraction of sand and conduct concrete recycling. The applicant is Camacho Resources LLC. Next slide, please. The property is located along the south side of Leopard Street, east of Real Road, west of Cathead Road. The property is primarily fronted along Leopard Street, which is designated as an A2 secondary arterial. To the north, across Leopard Street, are vacant properties, Zone Light Industrial District. To the south, are vacant properties, Zoned Light Industrial District. To the east and west, are industrial businesses, Zoned Light Industrial District. The light industrial businesses consist of construction offices and light industrial businesses that support the oil and petroleum industry in our city. The property is approximately eighty-point-eight-six acres in size, and it is unplatted. Next slide, please. The proposed rezoning to IH Heavy Industrial District is inconsistent with the adopted, adopted comprehensive plan. However, the existing business that is operating currently is under a special permit and has not demonstrated a negative impact to the surrounding areas with performance standards in place. Additionally, the concrete recycling facility could potentially create a noise and dust nuisance, therefore steps will be taken by the applicant to address these and mitigate these potential issues. Next slide, please. Staff and, as you say, Planning Commission recommends denial of IH Heavy Industrial District in lieu, therefore, approval of Light Industrial, sorry, approval of IL SP, which is Light Industrial District, with a special use permit. Thirty-two public notices were mailed out, five in favor, four in opposition, which is point two, sorry, which is two-point-two-four opposed, so it's non-controversial, and we stand by for any questions.
Okay, it's a public hearing, any comments from the council members out in the cloud?
Is the, is the property owner comfortable with the special permit?
Yes, sir, Councilman, I should've said that in my presentation, yes, we reached out to the council, reached out to the applicant, and worked out this particular zoning, zoning case, and, and he is accepted. Thank you.
All right, anybody else in the cloud? Mr. Hernandez.
I apologize, that was from the last one.
Okay, Mr. Roy?
I just wanted to state, say to staff that I concur with your recommendation. For the past two years, there was another company that opened, that had a business on Leopard, and I probably had as many complaints about that particular company as I did with some of the other issues that we had out there in the, in the area because of the movement of containers and dust and other things. And so I'm really reluctant when somebody says that they wanna put a heavy industrial district-type zoning right there off of Leopard. There was issues with noise, especially because if you, using heavy equipment, safety reasons, the loud buzzers and all that, that when you back up. So, for that, I just, I really agree in terms of putting in a light industrial district with a special permit, and I, I read the special permit, and I, I think that's just covering the residents in the district, and, and thank you for that. So I, I concur with the staff's recommendation.
All right, any other comments from the council? Now that we'll open the public hearing.
Yes, sir.
Any public comment, did you receive any public comment?
No, sir, not on this one, nothing to read into the record today.
No, no in favor and no in opposition?
No, sir.
All right, well, then we'll close the public hearing. And the staff recommendation is to, make sure I get this right now. Recommend denial of the change of zoning to industrial light, getting back to my backwards deal here, instead of light industrial, industrial light, sound like a beverage or something.
Denial of heavy industrial.
And, yeah, denial of industrial light district and RMH Manufactory Home District to IH Heavy Industrial District, in lieu thereof, approval of IL Light Industrial SP, Special District, with a special permit with conditions. So that's the, that's the motion, but that's recommendation by staff?
Yes, uh-huh, that's right.
Entertain a motion to support the staff recommendation.
I'd like to make a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, call the roll, Ms. Wirth.
So for passage of ordinance number sixteen, on its first reading, Mayor McComb.
Aye.
Councilmembers Roy.
Aye.
Smith abstains, Barrera.
Aye.
Garza.
Aye.
Juarez. Hernandez.
Aye.
Hunter.
Aye.
And Molina.
Aye.
The ordinance passes.
Okay, we have an ordinance now, item number seventeen, designated two-hundred-and-fifty-eight-point-nine acres within the jurisdiction of City Corpus Christi. This tax increment financing district to be known as reinvestment zone number five, City Corpus Christi, pursuant to a petition by the owners of Crosstown Common Subdivision, setting a maximum city financial participation of seventy-five percent over twenty years, and a maximum contribution of nine million dollars, and establishing a board of directors for the reinvestment zone. Are you gonna make this presentation?
I am.
All right.
Heather Hurlbert, Director of Finance and Business Analysis. So please go ahead and bring the presentation up. Next slide, please. So as the mayor read, what the item is today is to establish a tax increment zone located at the intersection of South Padre Island Drive and Crosstown Expressway. The zone consists of two-hundred-and-fifty-eight acres, and we're proposing a seventy-five percent contribution with a maximum term of twenty years. So just to refresh on what a tax increment zone is, is that it sets a base year of a taxable value. It defines a participation which can range up to a hundred percent of taxes. You define eligible expenses that will be covered or reimbursed through the tax increment zone, and the reimbursement or the payment of these eligible expenses is created by the growth in the zone above the base year, and the revenue, the tax revenue that is generated by that. That tax revenue is then used to reimburse eligible expenses. This tax increment zone is little, is very different from our other three that we have currently in place. This zone will reimburse the developer for infrastructure that will become a city asset. So this is not reimbursing for private infrastructure, this is, this is reimbursing for infrastructure that will become the city asset once that asset is completed and accepted by the city. Next slide, please. So I'm sure y'all have seen this before, this is how the tax increment zone works, and the proposed, proposed boundaries are shown here. There is the, this land is all owned by the developer currently, or one of their companies that is associated with the developer. Right now, the property is, has an ag exemption on it, and it is valued at eight-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars. The fair market value of that property is estimated at about eleven-point-seven million dollars. Currently, it is producing twenty thousand dollars for all the taxing entities, and the city rece, and of that, the city receives about five thousand dollars annually in property taxes. Next slide, please. So an overview of the project, as I said, this is located on, at South Padre Island Drive and Crosstown Expressway, that consists of two-hundred-and-fifty-eight acres, and it is currently primarily ag use. There is about three acres out of that that has already been converted from an ag exemption. The proposed development that the infrastructure will support is nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine multifamily units, seven-hundred-and-seventy-seven townhome units, and four-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand square feet of commercial development. The proposed timeline on the development is a build-out of about ten to eleven years, and at the end of twenty years, the estimated taxable value that will come onto the tax rolls will be three-hundred-and-twenty million dollars. As I said, the request from the developer is to be reimbursed for the cost of the street expansion, sewer, drainage, water, and wastewater infrastructure, and the development of a ten-acre park, which would be within the zone, and that park would be developed per city specifications. Next slide, please. So this is an aerial view of where the TERS will be. The large green area is the area that you've seen in the master plan when we did the briefing in July. The small area over to the right-hand side is part of the TERS that will be part of the commercial development. Next slide, please. So the proposal is for that this development will be built in phases, and along, within those phases, the infrastructure will also be built in those phases. So this is an, a, an overview of what the master plan of the area will be. You have townhome phase one, two, and three, multifamily phase one and two, and then we'll look a little bit closer at the development schedule on slide ten as we get there, but then the commercial will be phased in during those periods of time also. Next slide, please. So the parameters of the TERS, the proposed taxing jurisdictions would be the city, Nueces County, and Delmar College District. So the city will create the TERS, and then we will participate in the TERS, and the developer will be approaching Nueces County and Delmar to get their commitment for participation. The term is twenty years, with a base year of tax year twenty-twenty, and we are proposing a seventy-five percent increment used for the reimbursement of the infrastructure cost. This is a TERS by petition, so the developer's petitioning for the TERS. The total reimbursement will be capped at a not-to-exceed amount of seventeen million dollars, but the city's contribution will not exceed the nine million dollars. And it'll be the lesser of whatever is collected during that twenty-year period, or those nine, or that nine million dollars. So if the development does not, does not develop as proposed, then it will only capture the value up to year twenty. So as I said, the estimated increment is three-hundred-and-twenty million at the end of the twenty-year period. And again, this will be reimbursement for infrastructure, which will become a city asset. Next slide, please. So right now, you have majority of the, the property is tax, has an ag exemption on it. Per tax law, for those ag exemptions, has a three-year tax look-back period whenever it is converted, whenever that exemption is removed. So the, we estimate that approximately, based off of what the current estimated market value is, that around a hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand dollars in tax revenue will be generated by that look-back period over the period, it's about ten years is what they're looking at converting, and that money will be go, will go into the general fund, debt service, and the streets funds. The tax revenue collected in the zone and contributed to the zone will not include the two-plus-two-plus-two residential street taxes, and so currently, that fourth sense that is included in the tax rate will not be contributed to the zone. As I said, the city's contribution will not exceed the nine million dollars, or the lesser of whatever is, is collected within the twenty-year or the nine million dollars. And the developer will be reimbursed for infrastructure as that infrastructure is completed, so the section of street will be completed, inspected by the city, making sure that it is built to city specifications, and then it'll be accepted by the city. The, the developer will be eligible for reimbursement at that time, out of available revenues. Then seventy-five percent of the increment will be going to the, to the TERS, but twenty-five percent of that increment will be going into the general fund, debt service, and the streets fund, and we estimate that to be about fifteen-point-five million dollars over the twenty-year period. And again, the reimbursement will only be projects that are eligible through the project and financing plan, and it'll only extend to the twenty years. In addition, we will be negotiating the final project and financing plan, along with the developer agreement with the developer after the adoption of the TERS. And within those agreements, that's where more of the fine details, any type of milestones we wanna set forward, any specific conditions will be included. Those normally are not included in the TERS, since that's more of the formation of the actual zone. Next slide, please.
So.
Yes.
If you and the developer can't come to, this TERS is being adopted on a conditional basis, a contingency basis?
We're creating the TERS, but if for whatever reason we can't come to an agreement, say there's some impasse, that we can't come to agreement between the project and financing plan, or within the developer agreement, then we could basically dissolve the TERS.
The way you said it, Mayor, is, is correct, the answer is yes.
Yes.
This is step one, if, if we can't negotiate out the final plan, then it doesn't progress.
Okay.
There's no reason to think we can't, but just, just so you know.
Exactly, yes.
And do we get a chance to make suggestions in part of the, what we'd like to see?
Exactly, so the final part, the final project and financing plan will come back to council for approval. So yes, the council has final say on what is in that. Okay. So here's just a detail of the project costs and the timeline. These are the section of streets that are being proposed within the TERS to be built out and completed, and then this is just a brief summary of when the pha, the phasing on the townhomes, the multifamily, and the commercial, the commercial phases. There is an estimated about three-million-dollar placeholder in there for development of the park, that, like I said, will be built to city specifications, and that is just a placeholder at this time, and the, the cost for the development of the park may not be to that dollar amount, but that is something that will be negotiated during the, the project plan. Next slide, please. So here's a detail of the build-out. So it is, there's three different components, which are the multifamily phasing, the townhome phasing, and then the retail phasing. And so you see that the townhomes will start phasing in on year two, then multifamily, and also there'll be a component about sixty thousand square feet, sixty thousand square feet of commercial built started in year two, and then we start phasing in multifamily units, along with the townhomes. There's five different phasing of the commercial development, with the final phase coming on in year nine. Multifamily will be completed by year nine, and then the townhomes will, is estimated to be completed by year eleven.
Heather, can I just interrupt for a minute? Mayor, you and I had talked about this, but you can see under the blue column there, that there is retail built, commercial built throughout the development, so beginning in year two, there would already be some development, year four and five, and then again in eight and nine, so it's pretty much all front-loaded in the development, the, the commercial development.
Well, that was gonna be my question, is, I mean, is, is that a bullet point that construction has to start within the two-year period, or is this just a project? If they decide, well, you know, we don't wanna do that in the second year, we wanna move it to the fourth.
That is something that we can, we can include, we can include those type of milestones.
How do we nail that down, that in the second year, that they can start the houses or whatever, but the commercial? Because the, the money's in the retail business, and the streets are, and the, you know, so that, that would be.
Yes. So that, those are definitely points that we negotiate through the final project and financing plan, and also with the developer's agreement.
When, when does that happen, though?
So that will be before the development starts, we'll do that over the next several months, is, is, is negotiate, after we get the TERS adopted and set, then we will go through and start negotiating those finer points with the developer.
So milestones are put into that agreement?
They can be, yes.
Okay. My concern is the commercial part of this, which is the city's risk, I guess, if you want to call it that. And, and the times of everything going on. Okay, but, but you can set those milestones in the agreement?
Yes.
So is that the plan?
And we, we've discussed that. With staff has discussed, you know, how we want to approach it. We haven't come to a final, a set plan yet, but that has been in the discussions.
Okay, thank you.
And if that's council direction, then we will definitely move forward with that.
Okay. You want to finish that or you can finish with your presentation?
Oh, no, no, no. I was just saying that we will move forward with setting some of those commercial milestones within the development agreement. So now we have a couple more pages and then.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Next slide through. Next slide, please. So based off of the build-out schedule, this is how the value within the TERS would grow. As you can see, tax year 2020, which is our fiscal year, the values going into fiscal year 2021 would be our base year. That is set at the 825,000. Slight growth projected in tax year 21, and then you'll start seeing the development coming on in year two and tax year 2022. As I said, if you look at those yellow columns over there, that would be the 25%. That would go into the general fund from the growth. And so, you know, a little over 15 million would be collected by the general fund, debt service, and streets over the 20-year period. And again, the revenue going into the increment, the zone would not include the residential street portion. Next slide. So our next steps would be the second reading of the ordinance at the August 18th meeting. As we discussed, the developer will work with the other, the county and the Delmar College District for approval of their inter-local agreements for their participation within the zone. We'll then have continued discussions with the developer and we will bring a finalized agreement to council for approval in the September, October timeframe. And then we will negotiate the final developer agreement after the adoption of the project and financing plan. So that does conclude my presentation. I am available for any questions.
All right. Mr. Nen is your list first, go ahead.
Okay. If you want the cloud first. In here, you have the, this is all ag property, correct?
Correct. All except about three acres that have already, that does not have an ag exemption on it.
Okay, so is the base value gonna be the ag exemption value? Or is it going to be the actual value without the ag?
It'll be the, the value with the ag exemption per the tax laws. It is the taxable value. So at this time, the taxable value includes the ag exemption, so that does constitute the first, the base year.
Okay, but the ag exemption's gonna go away, so the value's gonna increase immediately in year one. What, what is that value?
Right now, the, the, and actually, it's not, it won't all increase in year one. They are phasing these in over several years. So the first, I think, is about 20, 20 acres that will come off. The overall estimated market value right now is about 11.7 million, I believe, for all 255 acres.
Not counting the ag exemption. So what would they be getting monetarily? What would be, the contribution be to the TERS if all the entities came in right away? What, what would you, I mean, what's your?
So the contribution that's gonna, let's see, it's 100 and about $190,000. It's gonna go to the general fund, divide that by three, so about $60,000 of tax increments that would go into the TERS.
Okay. The, one of the discussions we had when we, we met prior to the meeting was the discussions on the park. Now, this is probably a discussion for the project and financing plan and developer agreement. But it's kind of unusual to have a park this size. I mean, we've been telling developers, no for parks for, for at least the last five or six, five to six years that I'm aware of. And we're forcing them basically to create HOAs and have them build their own parks. Not to mention that Los Encinos Park is just a block away.
Block?
Is there a reason why we're wanting to build this size of a park that we will have to maintain once this is over? Once the, the TERS is complete?
Sure. When we, when planning did look at this development, they felt it was appropriate to include a park with the size of the development along with the number of residents that would be in that area.
And these are all townhomes, correct?
Townhomes and multifamily units, yes.
Okay, so generally with townhomes, you do have some HOA form there. Why wouldn't there be a park there? Why, why this size of a park?
I can't answer that question. That's what was proposed by the developer. Like I said, we had planning review it and they felt it was appropriate.
Okay. We'll probably, well, I think that needs to be revisited again. That's an awful lot to take on. You know, we're, we're strapped on our parks and recreation budget as it is. And to accept a park this size is significant. We'll address that with the next project, project plan or financing plan.
Can I just have Heather add to the conversation that there's maintenance dollars that would come out of the TERS for several years in the beginning?
Well, that's, that's during the TERS, but this TERS is, is not supposed to go in perpetuity in my.
No, that's right. Just to point out, she may have said it already, but I just wanted to highlight it again that in the, in the first couple of years of the TERS, or how many years?
For the, for the, for the life of the TERS.
The 20 years, or if it terminates sooner, there'll be maintenance dollars to help on that burden. Just a point. I know it won't go forever, but it's just.
And I, and I specifically made that mention.
Yes, sir.
That once the TERS is over, we have to take this over.
Yes, sir.
Right? So I know one of our biggest issues was all the parks we had to maintain and mow. A 10 acres is a lot to mow.
Yeah.
I'm just, I don't have a 10-acre lot, so I'm not mowing it, but I, you know. My father-in-law had five acres and it was a lot to mow. So I just want to, you know, I'm not really sure that's the best use. Maybe that could be looked at as a smaller park, much smaller. I mean, just for us to take on that, that cost and expense. Holly Road, as I recall, there was a bond to expand Holly Road. I'm assuming this is also gonna be part of that to improve it. Is, can you, can you talk a little bit about that?
I know that, yes, it is gonna be improved. I'm not sure of the specifics.
You know, Jeff is here. So next week on the city council agenda item, there is the bond program project to do the work that was planned in the 2016, 2018 bond programs. Jeff, you wanna?
This is before that.
And so it'll start the improvement. More has to be done, but Jeff will.
Jeff Edmonds, Director of Engineering Services. That project is a bond 2012 project. And it was supposed to be a state participation project, MPO project. We've had to split it into two. So this first phase is gonna be mainly utility improvements and minor road improvements for, for part of the length. And then there's a subsequent project, future project that's programmed in the MPO project plan to expand that roadway.
Okay, so none of the, none of this TERS will go to Holly because we already have a plan in place for that?
Yeah, the answer's correct.
Yes, that's, a part of Holly is not, that is not included on the project plan currently.
Okay.
It's not one of the streets.
Okay, and again, I am concerned about TERS going in, you know. The mechanism is that, you know, everyone here is not gonna be on council 20 years from now. And I'm just concerned that, you know, if we don't have some language to say that it is not, you know, TERS aren't designed to go into perpetuity. I don't know if we can add some language to that effect, but, well, we'll address that later. All right.
And to, to that point, I mean, the TERS language does state, has a stated life and a stated dollar amount. So as the ordinance is written currently, the TERS will expire either, either when the commitment is met or the 20-year period, whichever comes first.
Okay. Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Okay, staff three.
Personally, I think that this is a, it can be a good infill project for the city. I know that, that piece of land has been vacant for a very, very long time. When we talk about the city's risk, I know we're, we're talking about paying out money. So what happens if the contractor doesn't proceed with some of the work? What's, what's the city on the hook for?
Sure. So we have, the city has several protections. One is that, you know, a project would not be eligible for reimbursement until it's completed and accepted by the city. So that's the first thing. So the project, whatever that phase is, whatever that infrastructure is, has to be completed and accepted by the city before it's eligible for reimbursement. The second thing is, is that the, you know, we have our, our dollar amount capped at 9 million. So we can only, no matter, unless it comes back for amendment, if cost escalator, if, you know, there's other things that need to be done, we're only capped at what's on the project list and we're only responsible for $9 million of that cost. The other thing is because this is reimbursement, if the developer doesn't perform and that increment doesn't go, grow, that means there is no revenue to do the reimbursement with. So we're only going to reimburse with revenue that has been collected within the TERS. So, you know, I feel like those, those three items right there really do protect. And it puts the performance back on the developer to make sure that they develop the area to create the increment to generate the revenue for the reimbursement.
I appreciate your, your diligence. Thank you.
Mr. Roy?
You know, when I look at projects that have been proposed or done in the past, will this be the largest project that the city has underwent in terms of density? Am I making any sense? When you take a look at the fact that there's no single-family residents involved here, but there are multifamily and then townhomes, is it 999 total residents there? If you go back to your slide?
It's 999 multifamily units, 777 townhomes.
In addition to the 999?
Yes. Yes, exactly. So, and I'm sorry, I can't speak to whether or not that's the most dense. That's not.
Yeah.
My area of expertise.
Yeah, so if you take a look and you look at the average family being, what, 2.2 people or whatever? I, I just look at the density in terms of what we're doing. And I think, I, I was thinking about the park for the same reason, because you've got so many people. I think you gotta look at this model a little bit different because you have such a high density there. And I don't know if anybody else has any comment on that. But when you look at that, I think in terms of density and comparing it with any project in the city, because right now, most of the new construction, if you take a look at London, you take a look at what's going on in the south side out in Yorktown, it's all single-family. I can't recall, except for maybe a few smaller projects that we've had related to affordable housing and Prospera, that, you know, those type-like projects. And, and they're small in nature. So I, I think that's gonna be interesting. And I think that as long as we understand that and we know that there's gonna be some challenges with that, I think on our, on the infrastructure, just on, you know, traffic patterns, flow and all that, on the schools, you know, as we go through these phases. So that's my only thoughts on it. Thank you.
All right. Excuse me. This is Dan again. I can, can kind of address, I guess, the question about density. And yes, this, you know, in, in recent memory, the last 10 or 15 years or so, yeah, this would be one of the larger kind of multifamily projects that we would, would have. You know, of course, this will be developed in, in phases and in stages. You know, I think initially they want to do some townhomes and then at some point later on do apartments. But yes, this would definitely be one of the larger projects that we'd have in the city. And, you know, certainly, since the population is a little bit smaller, you know, single-family versus townhome, you know, you will, probably will see a little bit closer to two people per household versus maybe 2.5 or a little bit higher. So the population will be a little bit reduced in comparison, but, but not much. So that was kind of part of the analysis with the parks, that you have 17 home or so units that built, built out. And that, that certainly, I think, a park space would be appropriate for that many houses. Now, I think you can certainly look at the size of the park in more detailed discussion as you, as you move further along in, in this project, process. But, but yes, you're correct. This would definitely be one of the larger multifamily projects we've had in the city.
I, I think so. When you take a look at a project like this, that you have to kind of think about in terms of the space there, and even though it may be done in phases, when you get done with the end project, the last thing I'd want to see is the fact that maybe the density is, is where the point that it is that all of a sudden, by the time we get to the end, we have a, a place that may not be as desirable to live. So that's always something that you want to take a look at.
It is, it is feeling kind of a need. We have, you know, we, we haven't had too many townhome projects. So we would obviously like to have a kind of a diversified housing stock within the communities at different ranges, different folks have different interests in, in where they live. So I think having these additional townhomes, especially in a part of the city where we'd like to see development, is, is definitely a bonus as part of this project.
I, I absolutely agree. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? You're completed with your presentation. Any other comments?
Yes, Mayor, if I may. Roland?
Yeah.
You know, first off, I, I want to thank staff and particularly Heather. She's, I, I know she's worked diligently on this. I know they've spent a lot of time crunching the numbers. And it, it's been a lot of hard work to get, to get to this point. Her team and Steve and all of them, they've, they've really done a great job. You know, I think this, this addresses a lot of issues. You know, we've been talking about, you know, public, you know, density for quite some time. And even though, and, and I think that, that is probably the best way to enhance this area because number one, we're trying to make those homes sub-200. And, you know, I live in a townhome, you know, that's, you know, a little, just a little over 2,000 square feet. And when you're standing on the outside, you just can't really see that. You know, it, it would be nice. Now, we have a small area that we can walk and what have you. But I think the idea of the park is, is if you're, if you're gonna want to create public density, you want to have that type of feature where people can congregate and make it walkable distance. That Los Encinos Park is probably about a mile and a half, two miles away. It's not a block away. What is it, uh, so it's, and it's not a community area, which is, which it's still optional. The developer has indicated that from what they, from what other communities that, that this is, this is, this fits in really well. You know, many of you know, my daughter lives in New York City. And, you know, in New York City, you can't own a car, obviously. And she spends, well, you can, but, you know, it's, you spend just as much on insurance and parking as you do on the car payment. But, you know, a lot of it is walkable. There's, there's several huge parks that they, the, the community utilizes. And, you know, it's a walkable community, you know. There's, there's obviously a grocery store that's walkable, you know, where, where Walmart is. You know, and that's the same thing, going back to that, that type of density that I say that my daughter lives in. And she lives in a very nice apartment, which is multifamily housing. And it's gonna be something different. And I think that's the other thing, you know, where the school districts now are having challenges moving their, their boundary lines because of, their boundary lines because of the community migrating further south. And so right now, I think what this may do, I, I don't know what the school district's gonna do, but this helps Moody High School because, you know, you're getting people in the middle-income area, they're, what have you. You're gonna have more students for that, for that area versus right now, where, you know, Miller High School, we're, we're, we're just pulling away from that. So I think overall, I appreciate staff. I think, I think the park, I'm excited about. I, I think, I'd, I'd like to see more regional parks, you know, for our community. And I think that's why we don't maintain them, because we don't plan them as a regional type of deal. And people don't utilize them. And it's not in a dense area. So, you know, the other thing to consider is that when we look at the maintenance, you know, once that TERS is lifted, then this brings in about $2 million in ad valorem just to the city and about $4 million to the, to the other taxing entities. So it's just, I just think it's a great project. Obviously, it's in my district and I'm well supported with it. Thank you.
Mr. Nen, is your light back on or you never did turn it off? Okay. I don't know when you start negotiating or you're getting these bullet points. But I, I mean, to me, just needs to be real clear that the money's built for public infrastructure.
Yes.
And then that they're really, and I may have missed something, but did. And then, that they're really, and I may have missed something, but did, are the residential homes not captured in the tax increment finance?
They are, they are part of the growth increment, yes. But we're not, they're, the money, you know, the money that's generated by the TERS goes to reimburse for the infrastructure, it does not go to reimburse for any of the construction of any of the, the-
But the value, but the values of the-
Yes.
They're, they're captured in that.
Yes, exactly. It's part of the-
I think in some of the TERS, it's just that, maybe I'm mistaken, I was thinking on the island TERS, there, there's no residential, is there?
Yeah, the island TERS just basically goes down the Parker Road 22, which is right-
It's a commercial TERS.
Basically just commercial, and you can, that's, that is, you know, you, you, you plan TERS for different reasons, to capture different values.
Well, that's why, that's why I wanna make sure that we, that, that that commercial portion of this whole deal, that it, that it commences construction, and, and that needs to be in the bullet.
Sure.
That, that construction starts within the first 24 months.
Okay.
And that it, it progresses, it just doesn't start, and then the equipment's put on the side till the, not, year 15 or something.
Exactly.
But I mean, once it starts, it develops, because that, that's where your money is.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I don't know what you'll come back, but I'm just expressing my opinion, nobody else may agree, but I think that, to me, is pretty important. Other than that, I mean, that's a great project, and I, I was on the EDC board meeting this morning, and there was a, let's see, what, something about housing and the inventory, and normally, I think we got about a six-month worth of inventory, and I think that the report is that we're down to about two and a half months, so that means housing is getting into pretty good crunch, so we need some housing. And this affordable housing is even good, so.
Yeah, I've got-
I did, I did kind of find something interesting in the material, I couldn't put my hand on it this time, said, well, you know, nothing's developed over there for 30 years, well, duh, the same owner's on the property. So, I mean, but now they're doing it, and we're glad they are, so. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Warrillo?
Yes, I've got a quick question. So to some of that, some of those points there, Heather, I guess my concern is the, and going back to the developer agreement, you know, we've all, sitting here on this council, I've seen some developer agreements, I guess, that, and conversations and discussions, that we may not have agreed with, in terms of certain things, milestones, that kind of thing, like we're talking about here. So the commercial part of this is essential to the city, and that $9 million. So in that, I guess that develop, the development agreement, that you said earlier, is created at the next step?
Yes.
Right? Of this process?
Exactly.
Okay, so, for this particular case, again, my concern is the fact that we, we're in a pandemic, the piece to this, that, that's critical to the city, is the commercial piece. Okay, so, how is that, how do you see, I guess, that milestone in this agreement? Where do you see it? How do you see that make, in other words, we don't wanna set ourselves up for failure.
Exactly.
We don't want to go create a TERS, and yay, we're, this is wonderful, and I love this project, I met with them, and I think, what everybody else mentioned, we, we need, we need this area of, of town to develop, but my fear is, you know, the pandemic we're in, the piece of this development that is critical to the city, and I realize, well, if it doesn't happen, well, it doesn't pay, but-
Yeah.
We've gotta have that foresight. So how do you see that milestone in this particular agreement? In terms of commercial?
We can definitely, and, and I'm not a development person, so I'm gonna defer some of this back to, we'll work with our planning department, development services, things along those lines, but, you know, I would think that if, this is something that seems as is very important to council, that we would go in and have those milestones, that they would need to start the commercial development by, you know, year, by month 24.
Well, the, the good news is, they're going into this with their eyes wide open, the pandemic has been here.
Exactly.
So we can't, we can't use the pandemic as a default, they went into the deal in the middle of the pandemic.
Oh, right.
Yep, yep.
Right.
So, and just to point out, so the, the value brought by the commercial development is about one-fifth of the value, out of the $320 million worth of value, commercial, the commercial is estimated about 63 million of that. So, you know, the, the residential piece of it is the, is the greater part of the value, but we can definitely make sure that, that, you know, we do have those milestones to make sure that that, you know, that we have set times when that commercial development needs to start.
Okay. And again, just, I'm recalling other situations, financing on this?
I'm sorry?
The financing for the project?
Yes.
We have a letter of credit, or what, how, how do we know this, you know, the developers are good for what they're-
Sure, so we did, we did have, so, EDC did review their financial stack, the developer does have an agreement with IBC Bank, who is, I don't necessarily have a letter of credit per se, but they did verify that there was an agreement with IBC Bank to provide all or part of the financing.
So we'll probably get a letter of credit saying-
We can request that.
They're going to. Okay, so, that's wonderful. Great, this is exciting.
Anybody have any other questions?
There's none, I'd like to move for approval, Mayor.
You would?
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second on this, and then you'll come back with the milestones and all that sorts, too.
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor, it is a public hearing, just so. For the record, no comments.
It is a public hearing?
Yes, sir.
It just says ordinance?
It's, it's under the section for public hearings?
Oh, the other section, okay.
Yes, sir.
Well, over the public hearing, any comments in favor of, or in opposition to, or were there any submitted?
No, sir.
None?
No.
All right. Hearing no opposition or support comments, and we've got a motion to approve, then I'll-
Yes, sir.
Close the public hearing, and ask you to call the roll.
Yes, sir. So for passage of ordinance number 17 on its first reading, Mayor McComb?
Aye.
Councilmembers, Roy?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Barrera?
Aye.
Garza?
Aye.
Juajardo?
I'm.
Hernandez?
I abstain.
You abstain? Okay. Hunter?
Aye.
And Molina?
Aye.
The ordinance passes.
All right, well, that gets us down to the regular agenda items, but also, on our lunch, since we passed our 1:30 period, let's, the council go into executive session on items 21 and 22, per the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, and we'll return, and that, then we'll take up items 18, 19, through 22, right?
18, 19, and 20. Yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
Uh-oh. Is it on the floor? Is it on the floor or anything where you were sitting?
Okay. Thank you. Very good. Yes, sir. 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 Okay. Thank you. Very good.[919.19]
All right, we'll call the meeting back to order. We begin on the no action taken as a result of the closed session, right?
That's correct, Mayor, no action taken.
Right, then that, we're down to item number eighteen. Ms. Wirth has got a report on, that will be reflected in a resolution for the citizen-initiated petition. You want to explain that, Ms. Wirth?
Yes, sir. So, per the Texas Local Government Code, it's section nine point oh oh four. The governing body shall place a proposed charter amendment on the ballot if a petition, signed by at least five percent of registered voters in the city, or twenty thousand, whichever number is smaller, is submitted. So, on July thirtieth, we received a petition like that. It was a petition for a citizen-initiated charter amendment regarding the prohibition of the use, acquisition, and sale of desalinated water. So, on that date, on July the thirtieth, there were one hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred and two registered voters in the city. Five percent of one hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred and two is seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-five. So, that's the minimum number of valid signatures required to place this, that would require the council to place this charter amendment on the ballot. Upon our review, we found four thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven signatures on that petition. Now, these are unverified signatures, but it was well underneath that amount. So, even if every signature were valid, the petition would meet the seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-five required by law. So, what we've brought before you today is a resolution making that determination. It determines that the proposed citizen-initiated petition failed to comply with the Texas Local Government Code, section nine point oh oh four, because it was not signed by at least five percent of the qualified voters in the city of Corpus Christi. Are there any questions?
So, anybody have any questions? Procedurally, then, we, we need a motion to accept your report.
Yes, sir, this resolution.
And adopt the resolution that the petition was presented, reviewed in accordance with the law, and failed to meet the requirements.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
All right. I'll entertain a motion. Okay?
Thank you, Mayor. Rebecca, I know that the group that is collecting signatures, they stated, some of them stated during public comment, that they had continued to collect more signatures. Is there a deadline for them to, to, to bring more signatures in? Can they still do that?
So, this is the type of petition that state law does not allow us to, to supplement. So, when you supplement a petition, what you do sometimes, if there is a set deadline, you're allowed, the, the law allows the citizens to bring more signatures and add to that initial, to those initial signatures that were submitted. This particular type of petition, though, under the local government code, doesn't have a deadline. So, it can be submitted at any time. And what state law tells us is, if it's, if it's filed under this section, the election would be held on the first authorized uniform election date, or on the earlier of the date of the next municipal general election, or presidential general election, whichever's earlier. So, there's not a, a specific election, it just, whenever it's filed, it would go on that election. So, this particular petition, we, they cannot supplement.
They cannot supplement, but even so, I, I know that they had several thousand that had signed this petition.
Right.
And brought it to you. Have you had a chance to verify any of the signatures, to, or are they self-verifying?
We did not verify, the, the process, we don't ver, that state law provides, we don't actually look at signature against signature, we're just trying to, we ensure that they're actually registered voters in the city. And because the threshold was so far below that seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-five, we did not proceed with the verification process. So, we have not actually verified. Upon cursory review, we did notice duplicates, signatures, we did notice signatures where the date, that, that's a required field, the date that the signer signed it, that wasn't there. So, we know that's the raw number, the four thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven, but if, the verified number would be lower than that. And the threshold, like I said, is seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-five, so it's well below.
Okay, and, and I know that they had, the, the petition was, was, included with the petition was some, some bond language, or some ballot language.
Correct.
Do you have a copy of that, that you can forward to us?
Yes, of course, yeah, the, the petition itself, it was a charter amendment. The ballot language is, the governing body drafts the ballot language, so that's not done yet, but the, we do have the charter amendment that's available. Mr. Rizley, would you like to add to that?
Yeah, I would like to say, they don't, they don't, we would draft the, i- if they had enough signatures, we would draft the ballot language. However, the language of the actual charter amendment would have to be as provided by them. They did provide language for the proposed charter amendment, and it is actually much broader than the title purports to say. If I can, let me go through the, I, I have it right here, and it says, "It prohibits the following: funding or applying for loans, grants, or other monies to fund the construction or operation of desalination facilities; purchasing or otherwise acquiring rights to desalinated water from any source," and this is the, the broadest one, "using public funds, lands, or resources to encourage, promote, or support in any way the development of desalination plants, including, but not limited to, groundwater, brackish water, or saline water facilities." So, this would, in its broadest view, prohibit groundwater from being, facilities from being built. And D, "using freshwater impoundments or wastewater impoundments to store freshwater or wastewater for use in connection with desalination facilities, desalination discharge, or other operations related to the desalination process."
Yeah, that is written very, very broad. And, and with that language, does that, like, like you said, in, in the broadest section of that, that would, if, if all this did go forward, and that was included and, and voted on, that would prohibit us from even considering groundwater?
That would prohibit using public funds, lands, or resources to encourage, promote, or support the development of desalination plants. Depending on how you interpret it, they, it may be saying, "including but not limited to groundwater, brackish water, and saline water facilities." So, we might have the challenge of drafting, i- i- if they had, had enough, and they, and they don't, and they can't supplement here, and they, i- it could be interpreted to prohibit the construction of any facilities that would introduce groundwater to the system.
Okay. Well, thank you for the information, and if you don't mind, please forward me that, a copy of that, just for my review. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other question? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to accept the resolution.
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Ms. Wirth, you want to call the roll?
So, for passage of resolution number eighteen, Mayor McCombe?
Aye.
Councilmembers, Roy?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Barrera?
Aye.
Garza?
Aye.
Juajardo?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Aye.
And Molina?
Aye.
The resolution passes.
All right, item number nineteen is authorizing interlocal agreement with Nuasis County to reimburse two hundred thousand dollars to the city related to engineering design on Junior Beck Drive from Dead End to Old Brownsville Road, and appropriating a financial assistance award of three million dollars from the Department of Commerce, Economic Development Administration for the design and construction of Junior Beck Drive in Corpus Christi, and a matching fund of, and matching, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, part of the two thousand and eighteen bond program, and amending the program budget and appropriating the grant funds to the Street CIP Fund. This is a project that people have been working on a long time.
Yes, sir. Jeff Edmonds, Director of Engineering Services, you may recall, there's a Bond eighteen project to rebuild the existing portion of Junior Beck Road. And there was interest in extending that out to Old Brownsville. I think there was discussion in, leading up to the two thousand and eighteen bond, about trying to find another funding mechanism to, to be able to extend that. It was reviewed in, by council in January of two thousand and nineteen, and council approved applying for a grant from the Economic Development Administration. Sometime later that month, the county agreed to support the effort with the two hundred thousand dollars, and we just never have taken any action accepting that, entering into an interlocal agreement. The application on that grant was filed May of two thousand and nineteen, and they, they approved it in October of two thousand and nineteen. This is just formalizing that, that action, accepting those grant funds from the EDA and the two hundred thousand from the county to apply towards the project.
All right, and can you, this, what, what does that do to the status of the project now? This completes everything we needed to get to?
Well, we're still early in the design phase, and, you know, there's going to be council action, probably various ones, as we move forward. The, at least, we're going to have a construction contract award when we finalize the design on this. But we're going to bundle this into one package, one construction package, for the, the bond work and for the grant work. We'll have to separate it in bid form, so you can tell what's what for accountability purposes, but it doesn't make sense to do it as two separate contracts. So, that's, that's the path we're on now, is developing the, the bid documents to put it out as a single construction package.
Okay, but the, on this, it looked like sometime, maybe between now and March of next year, we'll be ready to, that's just the design?
Correct. We're, we're still, we've had an engineering letter report, like thirty percent design, and so, there's, I'd say, there's still a lot of moving parts on the, the design part of this. Correct. What we're showing here is getting the thing out for bid in April timeframe.
All right, so this time next year, they'll be under construction?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Long time coming, but it's coming.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
I've got, yes.
Go ahead, go ahead, councilmember.
Oh, yes, thank you. So, is this going to be concrete or asphalt?
Uh, well, we haven't decided yet.
Okay, that's good.
Depending on, I mean, we could bid it both ways, or, I, I think it depends on how we want to rehab the existing part, if we want to keep it asphalt, or if you want to take everything out. We're, we're still early in that, but...
Okay, but that'll come, because it is industrial, and this is, as the mayor said, a very long time coming. This is really good news. So, you will consider that, I guess.
Uh, I, I think what we would typically do is bid it both ways, but it could be that the existing part is asphalt only, because we might do more of a rehab, and then bid the, the new extension part with both concrete and asphalt.
Okay.
That's just what I'm thinking right here on the floor.
Okay. And looking at your map here, Mr. Edmonds, so it's going from Bear, so from Bear to, I guess that's the dead end, where the blue, yeah, right, where the blue starts?
Unfortunately, I printed it in black and white, but...
Oh, okay, well, from Bear Lane to the middle there of the...
Right, Bear Lane, until you get to the end of the development, is, is the bond project, and then the, the grant project extends it all the way down and connects to Old Brownsville Road.
Okay. Okay, well, this is really good news, because, yeah, as, as it was said, we've, we've been talking about this for a very long time. And so, and I also want to thank, not just staff, but I also want to thank the Ortiz family, because I know they are very, they've been very involved in, and wanting to get this done for many, many, many years. So, this is a great news item, I'm real excited, and I know Councilman Barrera has some words to say, it's his district. Boy, he's been doing so much in his district, right? Congratulations on that, Roland. All right, well, thank you very much, Jeff.
Yes, Mayor, and Councilmember Juajardo, thank you so much. You know, you know, Councilmember Juajardo actually brought this to my attention when, right after I first got elected, and, you know, thank you, and she, she caught me up to speed on what were, what was going on, and, and what the opportunity was for the, I guess, the industrial development, or the continuation of that, of that area, and then the issues that we've had with flooding. I know, you know, Jeff, you and your team, thank you for all the hard work that you've been putting into this, I know you got, you still got a road ahead, a long road ahead of you, you know, particularly to Ratna, who now I'm convinced that she actually runs engineering, you know? Did I say that out loud? I'm sorry. But, you know, I, I think you guys have, once again, and, and then also Commissioner Gonzalez, who is, you know, had appropriated the funds, it's also his, his precinct, and, you know, he's just been a great partner on this, so I, 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 once again, it's a great project, helped us to enhance that area for more industrial development. And I know the people in the, I've also talked to the superintendent for West Oso, Conrado, Conrado, and he's excited about the opportunity for more Advalorum and for their school district. And so, this is part of the, providing that economic infrastructure, so that way, we can provide more Advalorum for the community. So, thanks for all the hard work, and with that, if there's no other comments, I move for approval.
And, and I have to say, though, Mayor, I apologize for not, for getting there for, to mention Commissioner Jag, because he was very instrumental for many years. So, yes, thank you, Councilman Barrera. So, I second.
Okay, there's a motion and second on item...
Nineteen.
Nineteen. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Wirth, do you want to break the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Mc, for passage of ordinance nineteen on its first reading, Mayor McCombe?
Aye.
Councilmembers, Roy?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Barrera?
Aye.
Garza? Juajardo?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Aye.
And Molina?
Aye.
The ordinance passes.
All right, item number twenty is...
Yeah, here's Kevin.
Presentation on the consent decree.
Yep, Kevin has a short presentation.
Yes, sir, yeah, just a couple slides here. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Kevin Norton, Director of Water Utilities. Item twenty is the first reading of an ordinance to enter into the fifteen-year consent decree for a wastewater system. The consent decree's been in negotiation and development for over ten years with the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, and it is now right around the corner. A presentation about this proposed consent decree was given at city council meeting on June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty. This ordinance is for two things. The first is to enter into the consent decree, and the second is to appropriate approximately one point one nine million dollars to pay the mandated consent decree penalty and state attorney fees, and to also pay for legal services to finalize the consent decree and get the court approval, the federal court approval. When finalized, the consent decree is going to be a court-approved agreement between the EPA, Department of Justice, State of Texas, and the city. We had a history of high sanitary sewer overflows, which got the city on the EPA's radar back in two thousand and eight, and led to this federal government enforcement action and consent decree, that again, has been in the making for over ten years. The consent decree is a legal document regarding our sewer system with very strict requirements to prevent sanitary sewer overflows, and for environmental compliance with our treatment plant permits that are issued by the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. Essentially, we're going to be going to, we're going to be very, very closely monitored by the EPA in repairing and refurbishing our sewer system over a fifteen-year period, at an estimated cost of seven hundred and twenty-five million dollars over that fifteen-year period. The federal requirement to refurbish our system within fifteen years is pretty heavy-handed, and it's being mandated with a consent decree. Noncompliance with the decree is subject to large monetary fines by the federal government. Next slide, please. This slide of takeaways is from the city council presentation on June twenty-third. The federal court approval is required for the consent decree to be in effect. Following city council approval, the next step is for the consent decree to be filed in federal court for review and approval, and it will go into effect when the federal judge signs it, which we estimate will be in December, two thousand and twenty, but could be before or after December. Again, it's a fifteen-year plan, estimated at seven hundred and twenty-five million dollars, to improve our sewer collection system and treatment plants. Almost six hundred million dollars of this is estimated for capital improvement projects. The city has a lot of infrastructure with six wastewater treatment plants, one hundred two lift stations, and over fourteen hundred miles of underground sewer pipe. The EPA, back in two thousand and eight, two thousand and ten, they originally wanted the city to spend a billion dollars within ten years, which would have significantly increased wastewater rates, probably doubling them. The city negotiated a lower value spread over fifteen years, instead of ten years, to decrease the impacts on the ratepayers. The two focus areas for cleaning and repairs and capacity upgrades to the system are intended to reduce overflows, primarily in areas with older infrastructure. Over sixty percent of our underground sewer pipe is made out of clay, and it's over fifty years old, and therefore, subject to cracking and breaks. So, while negotiating with the EPA, the city moved forward and invested eighty-three million dollars over the past ten years into cleaning and refurbishment of the system. This work led to a dramatic ninety-three percent reduction in sanitary sewer overflows from about twelve hundred in two thousand and ten to seventy-seven last year, in two thousand and nineteen. So, in summary, this consent decree's been heading our way since two thousand and eight. The city spent over ten years negotiating with EPA to make the requirements well-defined, and as cost-effective as possible for the ratepayer, and also achievable for city staff to complete the work. Federal court approval is required for the consent decree to go into effect. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance, standing by for questions.
Are these old lights or the new? Your new light, Mr. Hernandez?
Okay, just to be clear, I know we talked a little bit about this during the executive session, but the seven hundred and twenty-five million dollars over fifteen years, if you do the math, it's about forty-eight point three million a year, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
That we have to pay for in improvements to our infrastructure, wastewater infrastructure. And you had said there was going to be about twenty dollars increase on our wastewater bill per month in year ten, is that correct?
Uh, no, no, sir, no, sir. For the scenario with a five thousand gallon a month residential customer, again, the median is four thousand gallons a month, so for five thousand gallon a month, it was projected to increase in, in ten years at eleven dollars. So, today, two thousand and twenty, pay fifty-three dollars a month, and two thousand and twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-nine, going to be paying around sixty-four dollars.
Okay, so, we're going to increase, on average, eleven dollars per person, I mean, per household per month, is that correct? Just as an estimate?
Uh, yes, sir, at that time.
For residential homes.
For residential homes, not, this doesn't include, include commercials, so, we're just talking residential.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, I'm looking at, at our customer base for wastewater, that's what, about eighty-nine, ninety thousand customers, is that correct?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, if you do the math, that comes out to about a little over ten million a year, but we have to spend forty-eight. Where's the additional money going to come from? Is it going to be in long, in bonds over time? Utility bonds, revenue bonds?
With, with a regular capital program that, you know, that we've historically been...
But we're, we're going to be borrowing money?
We are, yes, sir, but we've, we've regularly, you know, typically spend, you know, somewhere thirty-five to forty million dollars per year on the regular program, so it is going to be an increase, like I said, an average of about forty-eight million dollars per year, over fifteen years, whereas before, we were spending, you know, thirty-five to forty million dollars.
Okay, and just so I understand, you're saying eleven dollars, and the example we saw was from sixty-six to eighty-six. What, what were, what, why the difference in the numbers?
Those were, those, those were older, and I don't even know how old, well, there's a couple, a couple reasons for the numbers. So, one is that it was, it was older data, and they were going off of that. The, the numbers I was talking about is a current scenario, that was run in Ju-, in June, you know, two months ago.
So, why were we presented the, the other, the older numbers in executive session?
That was to show the, because that, that, that was the negotiation with the EPA, and that was the point of it, and where the EPA was starting it, and the EPA also had the combined stormwater and wastewater system, and that's, that's why it started off as a higher number, too, it assumed thirteen dollars right away, you know... It assumed $13 right away, you know, for stormwater fee, added on to the wastewater fee for a combined sewer utility.
Okay, so at, just so we know, $11 is at year 10, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So we're expecting increases of what in between?
Put up that bar chart, Kevin. Do you have, put up your backup slide number four.
Yes, sir. Hey, guys, can you pull up the backup slides, please?
Yeah, we have a graph here that'll help the councilmen. Pull up backup slide number four.
First backup slide.
Yeah.
That one, right? Yes, sir. Thank you. All right, so this is the scenario, the bar chart kind of showing what the, what a projection might look like, you know, for, again, for a 5,000 gallon a month residential customer. And starting, the city practices, or, you know, has a two-year rate adjustment cycle, and so this is for two fiscal years. So FY 2021, there's not going to be an increase this coming fiscal year in any of the rates. There's not going to be an increase. But right now, it's $53 a month for this customer. And then the next rate adjustment, FY 22, it'd go up estimated $3 a month. And then in 2024, fiscal year 24, another $4. And then 2026 and 2028, $2 for each of those fiscal years.
Okay, so we're committing our ratepayers to an additional, at year 10, an additional $165 per year. Is that correct?
No. An additional, no.
$165.
A dollar and a half the first two years, $2 the next two years.
At year 10, at $11 times 12, is 100, is my math wrong there? $11 a month times 12, oh, excuse me, $132 per year.
Yeah. Over today's rate, right. Over today's...
Okay, so I just want to...
Yeah, but that's 10 years. That's not next year.
Well, it's over the next 10 years.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're increasing...
Yeah, 10 years from now, that's what it will be, projected.
Right. Okay, now, the reason I say this is that I, you know, I just want to make very clear that we're going to be increasing rates on the wastewater to accommodate this consent decree. And I want to make sure the numbers are, as we're being clear on it, what that really is, in terms of the amounts. I saw earlier $20, so I was, you know, we had talked about it, it was the 11 that you had mentioned. So at that point, we're going to be increasing rates for wastewater. Now, we're not looking at this in isolation. The utility bill includes wastewater, water, stormwater, gas, and solid waste. And then we also have the street fee. So there's, you know, I want to make sure that when we're looking at this in totality, because we have other discussions for other things coming up that you had mentioned, in water, we have the desal discussion. I know there's lots of issues we have in stormwater. So I just want to make sure that we look at the big picture and how it impacts the utility bill, not just wastewater rates. Does that make, is that clear? Is that what I'm trying to understand here?
The overall impact.
It's the overall impact to this, because I don't know about any of the other council members, but the biggest complaint I get is the highway, high utility bills, that they're already some of the highest in the state already. I just want to make sure that we're, you know, our hands are tied here with this consent agreement, that we have to pay for this because of the, we're dealing with the sins of the past. You know, we didn't do the preventative maintenance. As you know, I rally, I rail on the fact that we didn't use Maximo to do preventive maintenance, and we're dealing with that now.
Well, Maximo hadn't been in existence the last 40 years.
No, no. We installed Maximo in 2001.
Well, that's 20.
Okay. But, I mean, we're dealing with the sins of the past. I'm just saying, I understand that. We, this is, this is a consent agreement that we're having to deal with because we had these problems. I just want to make sure that all that information above board, that we're committing ourselves to spending $725 million over the next 15 years because we have to. I just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Sure.
But the good news is, at one point, it was almost a billion and a half or something. So they did a great job negotiating.
True, yes, sir.
And we made a lot of improvements in the 10 years' worth of negotiations, too.
Yeah, 83 million.
We spent a lot of that, and improvements are in place as a result of that 10-year negotiation.
And the overflows have decreased a lot, but we're still, we still have to enter into this with the EPA.
Or more, down to less than...
77 last year, sir.
77 last year.
Actually, Mayor, if I could ask one more question here. Can we, can I actually see the numbers from the finance, from our financial advisor and the modeling of this? And I say this not because I don't trust you, it's because we've had some modeling issues in the past in terms of the wastewater rates. We just recently had that one $9 million issue. If I could see that in terms of regards to not only this particular issue, but any other impacts to the utility bill, and what that rate modeling actually looks like, if you could provide either Finance Department or the...
We have the rate model, sir. And so, part of what you mentioned, that was because there was inaccurate data and incorrect assumptions that were put into the model. That's what led to that $9 million. And it's been corrected. That's been corrected, but we could show you the rate model.
Okay, I understand that. I just want to make sure that we have complete visibility, if you can include that for all the council members, to actually know what the actual impact is to, with everything associated with utilities, at least from your side, what that includes. And maybe, Peter, if you can include solid waste and gas.
Yeah, so that, we don't have that in the 15-year model. We have just this item forecasted out.
Maybe a historical aspect on what the increases are for that?
For the, for the other ones that are in the bill? We can try that, yeah. We could probably get you this soon.
Just want to be very clear as to what we're, I mean, because, like I said, the biggest complaint I get is our wastewater, our water bill, or utility bill, what everybody calls the water bill, is complaint is being too high to begin with. And I want to make sure that we're, you know, we all know what we're voting on.
There's a lot of data that's put in there, and I know you love to do it, sir.
I'm sorry, I love going into it, so...
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Roy?
I just wanted to clarify one point, because I think I got, I think I understand The victory behind this, I guess, is the fact that we do not have to replace our, one of our water treatment facilities that we thought we were going to have to replace, correct?
Well, it also, that was, yeah, one of the victories, because...
Right. So with that, it's about a billion dollars, correct? And we could have also been subject to the levies that we have now on top of that. Am I right?
Let me, if I, if I may, the real victory here is, I mean, the OSA wasn't technically a consent decree victory, although it was a victory at the EPA, a major, major victory. The main victory is not having, is having 15 years to do these improvements versus 10 years. That accelerated timeline was going to force us to do the improvements almost twice as fast, because we'd still have to plan them over a few years. So that getting done in 10 years was going to require essentially doing the work in seven or eight.
But what I'm saying is, is that not only is that a victory, but you would have also had to replace a plant. And am I right?
Yeah, that's a separate victory from consent decree, but it was part of the victory that came from the EPA this year.
I'm just talking about, I'm just talking about the real, the realism of what we don't have to do right now. And I think, because had we have had to do those things, that would have put additional burden on to the taxpayers.
Yes, sir.
So, thank you. That was the only point I wanted to make. Thank you.
Anything else? Well, we'll see where it is. We, you know, you have very few options at this point. You've got to do it. And so, you know, people want the potties to flush, and they want water to flow with their pipes, so the EPA's, well, if you're going to do that, you've got to have your systems up to date, and we're moving up to date.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion, and you need approval on this today, right? I don't remember. We need to make a motion to approve, right?
Right.
Yes, sir.
It's a two-read ordinance, so we'll be back next week as well.
All right. Entertain a motion on item number 20?
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any other comment on item 20? Ms. Worth, you want to call the roll?
Yes, sir. For passage of ordinance number 20 on its first reading, Mayor McComb?
Aye.
Councilmembers Roy?
Aye.
Smith? Mr. Smith? Okay, absent. Mr. Barrera?
Aye.
Oh, there you are.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
He couldn't get the fish off his line quick enough.
I guess. Mr. Barrera?
He probably laid down on the couch.
Leaving all the job.
Yeah. I vote aye.
Okay. Garza?
Aye.
Juahardo?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Aye.
Hunter?
Aye.
And Molina?
Aye.
The ordinance passes.
All right, that, well, I see it, we've conducted our two executive session items, 21 and 20. Future agenda items, anybody got any? I think we got several that we've got coming here. Got anything else, Mr. City Manager?
No, just that, let's see, tomorrow night will be our city council District 2 work session at 6:00 PM with Councilman Molina, the WebEx virtual meeting on the budget, and then we'll be back here as a body on Thursday at 9:00 for our infrastructure budget work session. So two more events this week.
And we...
We'll also have a COVID press briefing tonight at 5:00.
5:00?
5:00.
And then the one, we've gone to two, just two days a week, Tuesdays and Fridays. Is Friday going to be at 3:00 or at 5:00?
5:00 on Friday.
But that's basically the A&amp;M presentation, right?
Yes, it is. That's right.
Okay. So we're kind of down to one day, I guess. I don't know, maybe the two, but I think primarily one day's the statistics, and one day's the A&amp;M result.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
So, and, all right, if there's no further business before the council on August the 11th, we're adjourned.